Charleston, West Virginia, Tulsa, Oklahoma.
Oh my God. I'm gonna go to Dallas.
All right, I'll call this meeting in order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, so just before we get started, I just want to take one minute. This is from the Dover One LLC project. These were pictures taken on Saturday, correct, by Engineer Berger. So they've dug that trench. So the only thing left to do is to put in that check valve, you're saying?
Yeah, backflow valve.
The backflow valve.
It's a check valve.
Yeah. So this hopefully takes care of the issues that were happening on North Nellie Hill Road. So again, just wanted to bring some sort of conclusion to the, you know, stuff that we do here at the planning board, that this is built and our engineer is satisfied with how it's going and do they think they'll have that valve in this week, next?
The supply problem.
Supply problem, sure.
Somewhere in the Atlantic Ocean.
Okay.
On a ship coming from somewhere.
Okay. So as soon as they can get it. All right. Thank you. All right, on to the minutes of the previous meeting. Okay, so at the previous meeting, we talked about the Poplar Hill Solar Site Walk and talked about Transco, and we had the transpublic hearing, and we talked about comprehensive plan. All right, so need a motion to approve the minutes of the September 19th planning board meeting. Motion made by Member Roman, signed by Member Valano. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, also is in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes five zero with two absences. So first on our new business, we have the Remer Avenue deli. So if a representative for Remer Avenue Deli could please come to the podium.
Over there, right?
Over here, please, thank you. All right. So let me just start by saying that I don't think everyone here is interested in your deli, just to put you at ease. This isn't about your deli, so I'm sure some people are interested in your deli. So but I just wanted to put you a little bit at ease there. So why don't you tell us about your project and let me try and find it here.
So this is a multi-purpose, multi-use home, and at the bottom there is a business use for, it was before a daycare, now we want to convert it into a deli. We have noticed around the area that there aren't too many businesses, like delis around Dover Plains near the train station, and we figured that this would be a great opportunity to bring more people to Dover Plains as well as be part of the community. And we actually have a business down in Brewster, and when we started in Brewster, it was, there was really not as many businesses, and we were right next to the train station, and 20 years later, there's a lot of businesses there. We also had another business in Pauling, New York, and the same situation, and we'd like, we like to see the results of how it's been blooming and helping the community.
Okay. And so it sounds like what you're saying is that you, you build your businesses in what you believe will be growth areas in the next 10 to 20 years.
Correct.
And so now you're, you've come to Dover Plains.
Correct.
Okay. And I'm just zooming in on the location, which is, there we go. Okay. So it's to Remer Avenue. This was most recently a preschool slash daycare.
Daycare, correct, yeah.
All right. And so, and there's an apartment that's on the second floor?
Correct.
Okay.
There's apartments on the second floor.
All right. And I'm just going off of parcel access because, you know, one of the things we have to go over with you is that we're gonna need more of a, more of a substantive drawing for this, I would, I would say. So I mean, we'll discuss that as we get a little further into it here, but. So just, so the, this is, the business would be located up front, there's an apartment on the second floor, and then there's a, like a garage type structure behind that?
Correct.
Okay. Sound right? Okay. All right. So again, we typically just kind of go through the application, our consultants may have different things to say, and then we'd set up a site walk just so we could see the outside, and because of the change of use, we respectfully request to see the inside of the space as to, you know, what you, you know, how you envision it looking, so. And just, you don't have any consultants with you? Are you, are you the owner-operator?
My dad would be the owner.
Your dad would be the owner, okay. All right. Okay. So I don't have any other questions or comments at this time. Member Williams?
No.
Member Williams?
No.
Start with Planner Werner?
Sure. Yeah, so it's a minor project for your code. It's a minor site plan approval. It doesn't require a public hearing for a minor project site plan approval, but you can still hold one if you want.
Okay.
I just had some questions about the floor area of the building. There was some information listed about the different square footages. There was 1,100 approximately listed for the two-bedroom apartment in the parcel access file, but the application didn't really have that much clarity on the breakdown between the floor area on the first floor, the second floor. I think that would be helpful to have. It sounds like the apartment's gonna stay currently, and is that garage that's in the back used by the apartment, or is it part of the business use?
It was a garage used by the tenants.
Okay. And that would remain the same, or would it be used for storage now, or do you know?
The basement would be the storage, but it would probably remain for the tenants.
The garage would be, okay.
Do they park there when you say for the tenants, or do they live there?
No, for parking.
So in this zone, the, if you want to go to the memo, yeah, comment number three just outlines that a retail business is permitted in the HM zone, subject to site plan approval. They did provide a sketch plan drawing, which, as you noted, was a little hard to read, didn't really meet a standard for what, you know, a basic site plan should have. I think a lot of things can be waived in the code because this is just an existing building, it's gonna be reused, but since you're buying the property, I assume there's a recent survey available. That might be the best site plan that the planning board can use to review this project. If you have a property survey, it's recent?
Not recent, no. Not recent, but we can definitely get one.
Okay. I mean, the building's not moving, you're not adding on to the building, you're just renovating the interior, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so I think a recent property survey could serve the purpose of a site plan for this one.
Part of the issue is we'd want to see the layout of, like, say, parking or entrances, things like that.
Correct. Right. So, and you know, we assume the, the back, if you want to bring up the aerial again, Mr. Chairman, that'd be good. The upper, the northeast portion of the property where there's, I think, a, it was formerly used as a play area for the daycare, would you be using that for more parking, you think, or would that be something else?
We would definitely consider it for additional parking. It's not in the plan yet, we haven't really thought that far ahead.
Okay. I'm only bringing it up because the fourth comment talks about parking, and, you know, based on the code requirements for different uses, it seems like at least eight spaces would be required for this property, six for the deli, if you have an approximately 1,500 square foot deli, that's what it equates to six required spaces, and two for the apartment, which sounds like they're already being used there in the garage, so.
Yeah, because one of the issues is, you can see, there's parking spaces laid out in front of the garage, so obviously.
Right.
You can't park in the garage if people are parking in those parking spaces, so.
Also, is it?
Some clarity there.
One apartment or two apartments upstairs?
Well, it's one apartment.
It's one, two-bedroom, I think.
Okay.
Back to the memo?
Sure. So, you know, that survey can help us figure that out, too, if it's, if there's room for eight spaces, which I think sounds reasonable for something like this. Number five, does architectural review doesn't, shouldn't really apply for this application, that's all that's saying. And then for referrals, it is within 500 feet of Route 22, which is a state road, so it will require the county referral. I think we want to wait to get that survey to do that, though.
Sure.
Down in my recommendations, I thought we might be able to refer it tonight, but in talking with Victoria, probably better to wait. I also noted the fire department might be interested in seeing it based on the change of use and, you know, cooking and occupancy issues, stuff like that. And it is a type-two seeker action. So my recommendations were just to classify it as type-two, discuss it amongst the board and consultants, and direct them to come back with a better site plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I guess, just, probably more of a legal question, but maybe it could be what either be. So if this was, it's a, it was a preschool slash nursery daycare, yeah, and now it's going to be a deli. So if it had previously been a deli and they wanted to make a deli, would they have to be here at all?
If it was not.
Is that the only change of use we're discussing?
That would not be a change of use.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying.
A continuation of.
Because if it was a deli and they said, oh, we want to make a deli, they wouldn't even be here at all.
Correct. But now, since it's changing use, the board has the opportunity to make sure that the parking is sufficient.
Correct.
You know, sufficient water, wastewater, that, you know, hours of operation of a deli might be different with different impacts on the neighborhood, so all of those, that's why the code requires them to come in and have you take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, because I think some people might be wondering why. Okay. Anything further, legal?
Yeah, and that's, that's all true. It's not a special permit, though, so there's no, like, special permit findings you have to make, it's really just a site plan review, but, you know, parking and access and all those issues are certainly in play with a site plan review, so.
Okay.
Right. I think the, the plan right now is incomplete. Once they have a, a better drawing, it would also be helpful to identify things like lights, if you're gonna have outdoor lights, I don't know what your hours of operation are going to be at night.
We're looking at between 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Yes, so there would need to be some kind of outdoor lights, we'd want to know the fixtures, locations, just to make sure it's not gonna shine out into the road or onto any neighbors.
Right. Anything further?
That's it for now.
All right. Anything engineering?
If no changes are being done, you talked about maybe adding some parking, says parking needs to be added, we should show it, and that may have some impact on drainage, so we want to see where, what we're doing with that, and we need to see the septic, where the septic is and where the water's connected on the site plan.
Yeah. Okay. So yeah, it would be helpful to see where the septic would be located somewhere on here. I mean, obviously, it's a community water system, so presuming, presumably there's some septic field, maybe it's here, maybe it's there, but, okay. All right. Thank you. Any, have you heard from our consultants? Anybody have any further comments or questions?
I do.
Member Williams?
Signage, will there be signage on the building or off the building? What do you plan for that?
Most likely on the building.
Lit or unlit?
Haven't thought that far ahead yet for the signage.
Okay.
Is there a particular preference?
No, I mean, there's some regulations.
Right.
With regards to the size of the signing, how you can light, you need to do downward lighting, you can't do an internal illumination, you know, like any kind of, you know, neon or anything like that. Attorney Paladaro, anything further on signage that may mention at this time?
I mean, generally, this board doesn't review the signage itself, that's a ministerial permit.
Yeah, it's.
But sign location is important, especially if you're gonna have something freestanding because it could block site distance, so you are gonna want to know the location of any, like, monument signs or freestanding signs.
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah. All right, so if the, so the sign is off the, so you're not planning on having a sign off the building?
Not off the building.
Okay, so then that wouldn't factor into the site plan at all, but I guess possibly have, if it's gonna be on the building, that would go to, basically, I guess.
It goes to the building department, but it, I mean, those board, you can certainly ask to see where it's gonna go because you are sort of sitting as the ARB as well.
Sure.
And so.
Okay. Anything further, Member Williams?
No, that, that would be wrong.
What is this small square structure to the right of the main building?
Here?
Yeah.
It's old, it was a, years ago, it was a bar, they used to have a bench, it was a bench shed, and it's just closed up there.
It's closed, it's a closed-in former bench shed.
I don't know if anybody lives in there.
Can, just give me a moment.
The news is so happy.
They only drive past it every day. Never, never noticed that little structure.
I thought we were able to view this. Didn't we? How did we view this? We viewed the side streets. What did we use?
Bing, is it Bing?
Bing Maps has it.
Apps, oh, okay.
Not Google.
Google Dynamic?
Yeah.
Slipping. They're slipping.
He has, he has written, had more on this.
But it's still in a very old photo.
It's still an old, okay.
Are they updating any of the photos? My Google houses.
Right, so presently, there's a sign here for the, not present, maybe it's not there anymore, but there was a sign there for the daycare, so that's where the sign was. And then, all right.
Oh, it's that little shingled?
Yeah, this is right here.
Oh, oh, okay. And do you have any plans for that structure?
Does someone live there?
We own the property, it's not ours.
No one lives there?
It belongs to?
Part of the property.
It's not part of that property?
I think it's a parcel line. Right. The parcel lines might be incorrect, that's true.
Okay. That makes more sense, kind of.
Church, I think.
Okay.
Let's see where the property, I should be, because that's the neighbor's building.
Okay, yeah, so I'm familiar with that little building.
It belongs to the church.
I was confused by the property lines.
Okay. So that, you have no plan? Because it's not yours.
Probably from the center line, and they pushed it over. It's probably the old deed, so you'd have to pull it over to the center line of the road.
Yeah. So another good reason why we need a accurate site plan.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any, so any, any further questions, Member Roman?
No, thank you.
Okay. Did you have any other questions for us, for the consultants at this time? Yeah.
The regu, the rules and the regulations, would we be able to locate those with the town of Dover Plains, or do we look it up online? How would that process work?
I'd be, someone from the building department could help you out with that. So there, you know, when you walk in, there, the window over to the right.
The code is available at a website called generalcode.com, and you go to New York, then you go to town of Dover, and you can click through, but the building department can tell you the section. but the building department can tell you the section that you'd be interested in.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, if you go to, if you type in Ecode three sixty and then Dover, and it's D O one-one-three-nine, that's the New York town of Dover, so. So, again, it's here, certain things obviously can be difficult to interpret, so, you know, certainly, you can reach out to the building department, they should try and help you to some extent, but.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you, oh, we need to set up the, the site walk, so. Since we'd want to see the outside and the inside, I think we're looking at like a Saturday, because it's getting dark, I think before, some people would be able to get off of work, so. Okay, does this Saturday morning work?
What time?
What is it?
Saturday the twenty-second, I'm free.
Okay.
This Saturday?
Yeah, okay, twenty-ninth? Twenty-ninth, twenty-ninth doesn't work?
November fifth.
November fifth?
November fifth. Okay. All right. Uh, November, Saturday, November fifth, eight AM?
Sounds good.
All right. Let's see. All right, so to make it official, any motion to have a site walk for the Reemer, or we're calling the Reemer Avenue Deli, for Saturday, November fifth, motion made by myself, so goodbye, Member? Williams. Williams. That works for you, and that works for all of us, it seems. Hopefully, most of our consultants can make it, any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. All right, the motion passes five-zero with two absences. Okay? So, i- in the meantime, since our next meeting is November twenty-first with a deadline of November fourth, so we would come to look at it afterwards. If you could possibly get us an updated site, you know, site plan before November, on or before November fourth, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Uh, that way we could have you on the agenda for November twenty-first, discuss the site walk, discuss the plan. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Surveyor, give me a call, tell him what he should do.
All right, so that's that, and that's. Okay, next we have a resolution to release erosion settlement control bond.
Chairman, do we need to set escrow on the last one?
Maybe should, but. Setting escrow.
Oh, we did, and they'll just give us a thousand escrow?
Right, so I don't know if you.
I mean, there's not much more to review at this time until we get a site plan, so.
That's true, we can wait.
Oh, we can wait, thank you. All right. Okay, so next we have LWF L C, we have a memo from the engineer, Berger. Expected the site above and found all distributed areas stabilized and all erosion control practices removed, recommend a release of the bond posted for erosion control. Okay, this was. What was it, three seventy-three Hall Sappel?
Yes.
It's the house, not the pond, right?
Up on top of the hill here, away from the pond.
Right. So, right, this, for members of the planning board and the public, not to be confused, because it's part of the, it's not this parcel, but it's part of the larger project where there was a, a pond for the deer, this is the house on the west side of the property off of Hall Sappel Road. Okay, I mean, we approved that erosion settlement control some years ago, I think, initially.
It was approved, uh, yeah.
Quite a while ago.
Twenty nineteen, I believe. Can pull it up.
All right, so I'll read this resolution, a resolution recommending the release of the performance guarantee LWF L C, whereas the applicant LWF L C was granted erosion settlement control permit approval to construct a single-family dwelling on a property located at three seventy-three Hall Sappel Road identified as tax parcel number six-nine-six-two-zero-zero dash eight-three-two-five-eight-eight, also known as the property in the RC District Stream Corridor and Aquifer Overlay Districts and Agricultural District twenty-three, collectively knows the project, and whereas, as a condition of approval of the erosion settlement control permit, the applicant was required to submit a performance guarantee in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred dollars, and whereas the planning board engineer has conducted a final inspection, and by letter dated September sixteen, twenty-twenty-two, has confirmed that all work authorized under the permit has been completed, and all provisions of the permit have been met, and whereas pursuant to Town Code Section sixty-five dash eleven subsection C, such performance guarantee shall continue in full force and effect until a certificate of compliance shall have been issued by the authorized official after such consultation with all agencies or individuals as he deems necessary to ensure that all provisions of this chapter and of the permit have been met, now therefore be resolved pursuant to Town Code Section sixty-five dash eleven subsection C, the town of Dover Planning Board hereby recommends issuance of a certificate of compliance and the subsequent release of the performance guarantee submitted to the town by the applicant. This resolution is being offered by?
Some of.
Member Holmes, seconded by Member Valano. Discussion? Seeing no discussion on this resolution, if the secretary please call the roll?
Chairman Corteen?
Aye.
Member Holmes? Member Ramon?
Aye.
Member Valana? Member Williams?
Aye.
Okay, this resolution is adopted five-zero with two absences. I know when I need to sign that. Okay. All right, so at this time, we have a discussion in public hearings, first up for discussion is Stony Brook Estates. Are there any representatives here from Stony Brook?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Julianne Flood, representing Stony Brook. I reached out to a few of you by email, we weren't able to meet the October deadline, so I don't have anything new to report today, but I spoke to our engineer today, and he is confident that we can meet the November fourth deadline for the November twenty-first planning board meeting, and he will be in attendance with me at that time.
And so you're requesting a continuation of the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so, nothing, I guess, further to discuss on our part, unless anyone has any questions or comments here, anything from our consultants? Okay. So, we still need to continue the public hearing that is scheduled for tonight, so we'll need a motion to continue the public hearing for Stony Brook Estates. Motion made by?
Some of.
Member Williams, seconded by? Member Ramon, all those in favor of continuing this public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. Okay, this public hearing is continued. Is there anybody that signed up on the sheet to speak on Stony Brook?
Don't see any names on the sheet.
The sign says Transco, but the sheet says Stony Brook, I signed Stony Brook.
Oh.
Okay, so.
I think there's nothing on.
Let me, let me see both.
Nobody on Stony Brook?
Mr. Whelan?
Just Mr. Whelan.
Uh, you, so you signed up for, did anyone else sign up to speak on Stony Brook? Please raise your hand. No? Yes? Did you sign up?
I did not.
Okay, so Mr. Whelan, if you'd like to go first, and then, sir, you could just state your name and address. How about that?
Good evening, Tom Whelan, here on behalf of my mother, the property owner, and on behalf of myself, who's a resident of the adjacent property.
Whelan, go ahead, you have three minutes, please, thank you.
Has there been a two thirty-nine M referral that's been received back as yet?
Someone will have to.
I'll have to look back, it's been before us for so many months now. So, comment noted, and we can answer that.
We're looking into it.
Okay, all right, then, otherwise, do I understand the procedural posture that we're in here is that this matter has been approved, but contingent upon DOT and?
No.
Or is it still under deliberation?
Still under deliberation, you're still having the public hearing that we're talking in right now.
Very well.
Yeah.
Make sure there was a purpose to speaking tonight.
Yeah.
And what I'd like to call to your attention here, and I've brought copies, in two thousand eight, when the Dover Stone Church Lane Trail easement was recorded, which was in tandem with the conservation easement relative to Stone Church, the recitals in the instruments, reading it first from the Trail Easement, is that whereas the property is approved for subdivision as two subdivided lots, each a lot and collectively the lots, which one of the lots comprising approximately thirty-one point zero one plus or minus acres to be developed as twenty-eight clustered residential condominium units, quote, "The condominium project." And then on the other instrument, similarly, it refers to that the approval of the subdivision of the parcel, which is before the board, is in tandem with the condominium project. So, there's an issue that has been raised here that, since, for over a decade, the matter was presented as a condominium project, that it's not just incidental that at the eleventh hour, there is something other than a condominium project that is being presented. So, I'd like you to consider that, and then.
Mr. Whelan, just, is that for us, for, is that for you to give to the?
Yeah, I'll give the.
Secretary?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, these are instruments recorded at the Duchess County Clerk's Office, just the front page of it.
Sure.
Okay. Then, I'd like to inquire, as I understand it, the septic fields are proposed to be on the north side of the Stone Church Lane, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, which would seem to be entirely contrary to the stated purposes of the conservation easement and the trail easement. So, I, certainly, you're not going to put in septic fields for twenty-eight residential units, whether they're condos, whether they're rentals, this is not going to take place in a day and a half, there's going to be a lot of heavy equipment that's going to be moving across the Stone Church Lane. And I do believe that that is entirely contrary to the concept that is made into a recorded legal instrument, and that the board should seriously consider that.
Okay, thank you.
So, Chairman?
Yes.
I have a record that we did refer to county planning in July.
Yes.
I don't, I can't put my finger on the response, but the referral was made.
I can't, Ryan's got my laptop.
Yeah, I mean, so we'll follow up, but yes, it was, it was referred in July.
Let me just see if I can find her something real quick.
Now you have to go into my files.
Okay, well, we're not going to do that right now, so. Just, Mr. Whelan, were you, in part, were you asking so you could see a copy of that response?
I'm sorry?
Were you asking about the two thirty-nine M so you could see the response? Okay, yeah, no, did you want to see the response?
Oh, is there one?
We're, we need to look for it, it's just not handy right here.
There is one.
Well, that's what we have to track down, it was sent to Duchess County Planning in July. So, we should have received a response from them, we're going to check the records to see that we in fact did receive a response.
Yeah, we, we received it within thirty days.
Okay.
We did receive it.
Okay, so she's confident we did receive it, I just can't get my fingers on it on the laptop right now. Okay, so, you just, yeah, talk with Secretary Van Millen, okay, thank you. Sir, again, your name?
Andy Durkin, Dover Plains Water.
First name, I'm sorry.
Andy.
Andy.
Dover Plains Water.
Okay, and?
I'd like to.
You have three minutes?
Yeah, I'd like to address the water discharge from the property. I know we're, there's three culverts, some from the property, some from the state road, Route twenty-two. I know the YNOS are having problems with water there, and I mentioned it to the board before, I just find it odd that we're taking all this water and we're discharging it north of the wellheads of Dover Plains Water. And then I started looking into it, and New York State Department of Health Part Five has a regulation that any wells less than fifty feet, which they are, you need a setback of two hundred feet, and we don't meet it.
Well, that's a health department, and they're the ones who approved it, so.
Well, it'll have to be addressed, they didn't know or they didn't look at it, I don't know what they were told, I don't know if the water discharge was different at that time, I don't know when the last sequeur was, does anyone know? Was it changed from Randella, was that the proper name?
The sequeur's been looked at throughout the year several times and been reaffirmed, but the original sequeur was prior to.
But right now, as I read this, New York State Department of Health Part Five regulation says, any wells less than fifty feet, you have to double the length, and it, basically, the well should be two hundred feet away from the stream. And it's not.
Well, you mean, I'm sorry, the discharge should be two hundred feet away from?
So, we're taking three pipes, I don't know what size culvert it is, and I know I spoke to Joe before and I did some.
The discharge they're talking about is sewer discharge, not stormwater.
And storm, are you taking the water from Route twenty-two also?
The water from twenty-two is not going into that bypass, that bypass is a bypass pipe.
How are you handling that water then, Joe?
That's, they're sending it through the original DOT piping, that's a DOT storm sewer, where it's been going today.
Then I'm confused.
They're not changing the DOT storm sewer at all, that's going, that's one of the points of getting the DOT permit, that's why we send them back to DOT. But that's a DOT current drainage system, that's for the DOT to handle, it's not ours, we have no authority over that pipe or that discharge, it's their discharge, and it's current, it's not changed, it's not going to be changed, it's.
When did the discharge of water get rerouted north of the wellfield, the wellheads?
The storm, the DOT storm sewer has been there for.
No, when, when did the discharge of, the three culvert pipes?
The three culvert pipes.
You mean here?
Is part of this project.
Right, was that from day one in two thousand seven?
That's the original design that went.
In two thousand seven?
Yes, that's the original design, yes.
Did they know where it was going?
Department of Health knew, because they looked at the well, matter of fact, that's why the septic system was put way over two thousand feet away within its advanced treatment system because of that well, so the health department was very much aware of that well location, because they, that well and the location of that well drove the extended size of the septic system that was put in there, which was, again, with the extended treatment system, which would normally not be required.
So, how did they get around Part Five?
That's the health department approval, we can look in, but we have no authority over that as well.
I think we should.
That's the health department, thing is, if the health department approves it, I, as a town engineer, I cannot, you know, overrule the Duchess County Health Department.
Does this make, I mean, the board, we could refer this question back to the health department?
Sure.
And ask them.
Could you just share that regulation that you have in writing, so we can see it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I mean, I, I didn't call them, but I know people that, from the health department, I'm sure it was all done, but, and then there was, well, I was just surprised how they did it, they had the, the stream corridor overlay district and the flood plain, I just was surprised that they're letting you do that.
Again, that was.
Yeah, it's, we have to look into this. Where you, you raised something that we need to look into.
We could certainly ask, but we, you know, that's certainly under their control.
So, do you want to make a motion to authorize?
Well, we're still in the, maybe when we get out of the public hearing, or, you know, we continue it.
Yeah, we're, we're well aware of those. Yeah, we're well aware of those setbacks.
I'm sure, yeah.
It's not something we impose.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So again, like we stated before, we can't overrule the state DOT. We can't overrule the county.
Health Department.
Health Department.
No.
But we can certainly ask.
I mean, we could verify that they're considering it now. I know that they looked at it because during the entire process, during the original design, they brought in experts for hydrogeology and things because of the municipal well, and that's why the system was designed so far away. They actually had Russell Urbanmead from Chazen as a special consultant to the town on the effects of the municipal well from their septic system and from the site. And his recommendation was to add an advanced treatment unit, which is basically a small treatment plant, which typically is not required for an in-ground system.
Right.
To further treat the waste from the site, so there would be no adverse effects to the municipal well.
Right.
So the location of the well and the well itself was clearly reviewed within the environmental, but certainly.
Is it, it's possible they made?
Just looked at that. No, they looked at the distance and said it was fine. Those are, those setbacks are recommendations, not standards that are locked in stone.
Okay.
The recommendations.
Mr. Wellen, if you'd just come back up for one minute, if you could just clarify something. The well itself is located in one of these two structures, I would gather?
I need help.
Sure.
That's what I thought there, yeah.
There it is. Yes, there's a well in each of them.
In each of them, okay.
Each of them.
All right, and so from what you're saying, I'd say the
So.
approximate location of the discharge is, you know, from the stormwater is about there.
About there.
Yeah.
It's, it's within the two hundred feet.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to.
Greatly.
Three hundred forty feet. Um, that's.
No, but if you.
You can look at it, yeah.
The stream comes down around. This is the stream here.
Right.
That's not what you do. You, you, you take the distance.
Right, from the, from the discharge point.
Not from the stream itself.
It'll be there.
The stream is a pre-existing stream.
From the.
Point of your, the distance would be from the end of that culvert.
Not where the stream is.
No. The stream is existing condition. Unless they altered the stream in the process of this job, which they're not. The distance would come from the end of the culvert.
So I get three hundred thirty-two. I'd say the closest it could be is three hundred feet. Okay.
I thought it was from the stream.
Because the stream goes by here.
If you were to drill the wells today, it would be from the stream. That would be conditioned on your wells, not on anyone else discharging to that stream. So the fact that that stream is within two hundred feet of the wells doesn't preclude people from draining into it.
Right, you have to figure this.
The new discharge points would be.
If that was the case, then nothing could be built upstream because the stream is within two hundred feet of the well.
Any new discharge.
That's not what they mean, so.
It's a new discharge point.
Yes, okay. So, right, if you didn't own the property here and someone wanted to discharge right here, that would, that would be problematic because it's within two hundred feet, potentially problematic. Is what you're saying?
Correct.
Mr. Berger, okay.
Correct, correct.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Durkin. All right, is there anyone? Anyone else looking to speak at Stony Brook Estates Public Hearing? Please come to the podium this time. He's having a seat. Okay. With that, I'll make a motion to, so the request from the applicant is to continue the public hearing to our meeting on November twenty-first. That's yours, I'm sorry. Because they're confident that their engineer will have more information submitted by November fourth, and so something for us and the public to substantively review on the twenty-first. So I'll need a motion to continue this public hearing to November twenty-first. Motion made by Member Villano, seconded by Member Holmes. Discussion. See no discussion. All is in favor of continuing the public hearing. As stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, say no. Okay, this public hearing for Stony Brook Estates is continued to November twenty-first. Okay.
So given, given the measurements that
Yeah.
you've, you know, done here, is there still a need to refer this to?
I wouldn't think so. I mean, I'll leave that to Engineer Berger to advise us.
Certainly, we could just make a simple phone call to the review engineer and see what the status is and make sure that they are looking. Any, any revision to the sewer plan looks at the well as well, just because they should.
Right.
The engineers now who are looking at Health Department are not the ones who were there when this was approved. Those engineers have retired.
Sure.
So.
And again, it's, like you said, two hundred, the two hundred feet is a strong, how would you classify it? Strong recommendation?
It's, yeah, it's, it's, it's not a standard, but a recommendation.
Okay.
And they try to comply with that, but there are mitigation measures that the Health Department can take into consideration.
Right. And just one last thing. Okay, so the septic fields as proposed are north of this pond that we have here, so, and again, the.
And then, and the advanced treatment unit is at the end of the cul-de-sac. So there's two parts to that septic system, if you go back to the road.
Right, but there's no, it's the, it's being treated.
The primary treatments at the end of the cul-de-sac, right there.
But then it's being pumped north.
Then the effluent is being pumped up to it. So the effluent going into those fields are very clean, not, not drinkable clean, but certainly cleaner than the water you would see coming off of a state highway.
Okay. And so the approximate distance is, say, from here to the well there is. Nope, that's not the right one. Sorry. Two thousand fifty-five feet?
Yeah, it was.
Or it was around two thousand?
It was about two thousand. That was the calculation that Russell Urbanmead came up with to, to make sure there was no impact on the wells due to any, in case the advanced treatment unit failed and Rossu, which was pumped up to the fields, what would be the transient distance they needed to treat that so there'd be not, you know, there's never anything absolute, but the, the minimal impact to the wells.
Understood, okay. All right. Thank you, Engineer Berger. All right, so now we have a discussion and public hearing on New York Transco LLC. So again, we'll start with a discussion. And then, if anyone remembers, have any comments or questions, consultants, back to us, and then we'll continue the public hearing from last time. So, Transco, if you'd like to come to the podium.
Hello, good evening. My name is Anthony Morando. I'm attorney with Cuddy and Fader, here tonight with New York Transco. As you know, New York Transco gave a presentation at the September public hearing. They're not going to be giving a full presentation this evening, but Sam Johnson and Shannon Backsivannis from New York Transco are here with me this evening. Sam will provide a brief summary of the written response document that we provided to the planning board after the prior public hearing in September. First, I just wanted to briefly touch on a few housekeeping items for tonight's public hearing. The September hearing, as you know, was fully noticed and properly noticed, including the posting of signs on the site, mailing of notice, and publishing of notice. All requirements were met, but as New York Transco routinely does on their projects and has done with this application, they went a bit further, in addition with coordinating with the town to do a bit more. New York Transco again posted signs on the site in multiple locations. The town again mailed notice and published notice in October, although not required to do so. Also, New York Transco has prepared a project overview summary document, which were provided on the Transco website, which has been referenced at the prior meetings and in the presentation materials. That's in addition to the original fact sheet that was provided on that website over, well, over a year ago at this point. Second, very briefly, I think it may be helpful just to recap a few of the facts regarding the additional public outreach that has been performed by Transco and the town of Dover in this matter. The planning board's public meeting process in this project started back in October of two thousand twenty-one. Transco has presented and appeared at eight planning board and public meetings at this point, where the meetings were posted, videoed, and available for public view and attendance in person. New York Transco presented to the town board in January, as we previously mentioned, as a courtesy, although that was not required to do so. We again did that, and it was videoed and available for public review. The town has also posted all application materials on the town's website and made them available at town hall for anyone to review them. Transco is also, as part of their, their company mission, has actively engaged with the public prior to filing the application, as well as continued to during the process. Just a few examples, Transco has maintained that project webpage, newyorktransco.com/Dover. New York Transco has maintained a toll-free hotline with a number to reach out to, as well as a specific project email that we've presented in our materials and at prior meetings. Transco also conducted direct community outreach prior to filing the application last year, as well as during that process, contacting residents in person, by letter, and by email. We've also reached out to individual groups, area groups, such as the Frogs. I just wanted to point out some of this for the benefit of the planning board. At this point, I'll hand it over to Sam to recap the response to the public comments.
Good evening again, folks. My name is Sam Johnson. I am a senior project manager at New York Transco. So really, I wanted to summarize the memo and information that we provided since the last public hearing. Effectively, what we did is summarized a lot of the questions and topics that were raised and made an attempt to answer a lot of those questions. And as well, we provided some written responses specifically on property tax, underground transmission line, and land values. And were the three appendices that we, that we put forth there. So from a real property tax perspective, I guess I, I do want to clear up one thing, is that, that we are not seeking a pilot agreement in this case. We are expected and will pay the fair share of taxes, as is assessed by the local agencies. In fact, I think we've done some preliminary calculations that were part of the submittal that showed when, when this does eventually hit the tax books, we expect to pay about approximately one point nine million dollars in the first year, and that's a significant increase as to what's, what's these, what's there today. And again, that's expressed in the, in the memo that we provided. And we believe that the project will have a positive economic impact on the, on the town and the county. And again, it is a shared, that one point eight million dollars is shared, or nine million dollars is shared, of course, with the county. But again, it's, this is without increasing any demands on community services, so no water, no sewer. There is the fire that we're dealing with and those, but again, no school influences and things like that. We also, you asked us to provide a memo on underground, so I'll just go through that at a very high level, and then again, I'll stay and, and answer questions. So really, what, our bottom line is it's really not feasible to install underground for this short distance underneath of Route twenty-six, primarily because of the unacceptable level of risk should there be a, a long-term outage on this line. So if there's a fault somewhere in that underground cable, it would take a significant amount of time to repair, and that would negatively affect the, the regional energy system, not just very locally, but also in, in the, in the greater central area. Again, this project is to assist in bringing the solar and wind from, from the mid-state and upper state down to this area and to south as we go forward. So by, by losing this project in the overall system, once it's, once it's installed, it would definitely negatively affect the energy flow in this area. And a prolonged outage would obviously cause issues, not just as, as an owner, but also to the, the independent grid operator and everything else that goes with that. In addition, there are some, some other more local issues. To create this, we'd have to blast a significant amount of rock that would have to go underground. There's potential for environmental impacts as we get near the, near the wetlands that are contained on the right-of-way. Again, it's not just installing an underground. There's all the appurtenances that go with it. So it's risers, it's, it's termination structures, and I think we tried to detail all of that in the report that we gave you. And lastly, it's, it's consistent with the infrastructure that exists there. There's, there's overhead structures there now, and we're proposing to put two new oversight structures and to overhead connect into the existing line today. And that's it.
Three, three structures.
Three, sorry, yes. The two on our site, one on the right-of-way.
Right. Okay. All right, so that was.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so. All right, so as you're, you're stating that the project is estimated eighty million dollar public utility infrastructure investment, about one point nine million dollars in taxes, split along how taxes are normally split in Dover, seventy percent to school, fifteen percent county, fifteen percent, just everything else, town, fire, okay. And you're stating that you're not seeking a permit, a pilot.
That's correct.
Agreement, okay. So am I, are we to interpret that as you are never seeking a pilot?
Correct.
Okay. Have you sought a pilot for any other projects in the state of New York?
Nope.
Got any intention of seeking a pilot?
Nope. None of our assets are.
Is there any other way I can ask this? Attorney Polidaro? Okay. So.
There's no job creation, so query whether there would even be.
Sure.
Basis for a pilot.
Sure. Right, okay.
Correct.
Okay, and so you're confident, highly confident, that that number, one point, one point eight nine eight million is correct?
Yeah, we had our, our tax specialist use the twenty twenty-two tax numbers that were part of the, the town and the county and calculated that out to what it is.
Based on the property being assessed at eighty million dollars?
Correct.
Okay, so then I just realized the other way to ask this. After this is approved, you will not be seeking a change of assessment with the Assessment Review Board of the town?
That's correct.
Okay. Because you could say that, and then you go and say, well, it's only really worth twenty million.
So did you, you just took the mill rate times your expected value, but you didn't account for there being one, you know, there's a budget, and then it's allocated amongst all the pieces, so it actually might be lower once everyone else is factored in?
Yeah, so what we did is we took the property taxes today versus the assessed value that it is today, and then we said if, if the assessment on our property is eighty million dollars and use the exact same calculations, it comes out to approximately one point nine million. Obviously, there's nuances back and forth.
Yeah, if, you're right, if you're increasing the assessed value of the town by a certain amount, then technically, everyone would get a slight tax cut. You would be paying, basically, you're paying for everyone's tax cut, is what you would be saying?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, again, I think, yeah, we need to double-check on these numbers.
These do, yeah.
Because it, I mean, it sounds, some would say, too good to be true.
Understood.
One point nine million dollars, okay. So it's an eighty million dollar project. Now, looking at the part of your assessment for going underground, you were able to answer kind of the half of this that I already knew, that it costs about five, ten times as much to go underground as above ground.
Correct.
So of the eighty million dollar cost, what is the cost of the three towers and the lines going overhead, like? Because five to ten times as much of a hundred thousand dollars is half a million to a million dollars.
Yeah.
Of ten million dollars, it's fifty to a hundred million. So it depends on, five to ten times as much is not that big of a deal in the grand scheme of eighty million dollars if this is a relatively small cost.
Yeah, understood. The, the poles themselves and the construction are in that three to four million dollar range.
Okay.
Somewhere in there, so it's.
So of the eighty million, you're saying three to four million is the poles?
Specific to those three structures and the lines.
All right, and so what you're saying is just by a raw calculation that anybody could find online, it's, it would cost fifteen or twenty to thirty or forty million dollars to go underground?
That's correct.
For that short little distance, okay. Do you have any harder information to back up what that cost would be? Because it's just easy to say, like, oh, it costs five, ten times as much, which, you know, might be true if we're, you know, if it's going to be, oh, we're going to bury a mile, and that a mile costs, you know, ten million, and so burying a mile would be fifty to a hundred million, but, you know, it's a relatively short distance. It's only three poles.
Yep.
So would you be able to find us some more concrete information as to?
I can look for something. There are studies out there that sort of are general. Again, a lot of this is the specificness of the construction itself, so there is a lot of blasting, which costs more than just trenching, as you would, so we can certainly look into something that's, that's comparable.
Okay. Again, I just think, you know, a lot of people I think would have a hard time getting that blasting and, you know, you said you have to build a structure, which I understand, but that that would cost, you know, fifteen, twenty, or thirty or forty million dollars to do for just that short space.
It's probably in, in the, in the lower end of that, so I would, I wouldn't go as high as forty. It's probably in that ten to fifteen million dollars.
Get us that information and, Frank, could they, excuse me. But you could get us that information and, Frank, could they, excuse me, get that back to us?
Yep.
Thank you. All right.
There's also the cable to consider as well. It's with the amount of cable that needs to be installed, it's a little more significant than...
Sure.
But that is a cost.
Right.
We can do that.
I mean, it's not made of diamond.
No.
Okay.
You wouldn't be direct burying, you're going to be burying it in a vault or a conduit as a minimum.
That's correct, yeah. We proposed a duck bank system.
A duck bank would be safer.
Yep. Correct.
Okay. I guess just on the other side of all this, just total fairness, is there, is there an example you can think of where rather than putting in the towers, it was buried under a roadway?
Honestly, for this short of a distance, off the top of my head, I cannot, so I'm going to have to go research that.
So for a longer distance, where, you know, where would you?
So obviously, in New York City, there's a lot. I know that Eversource puts them in southern Connecticut, but that was because they were constrained, they had no other place to put it. So it's actually right down Route 1 in the Darien Greenwich.
Okay. Underneath or adjacent to Route 1 is what you're saying, Darien or Greenwich?
Yep.
Okay. So are there other examples, maybe not this short of a distance?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you on that. I just had one more thing, just in response to public comment. You could actually sit down for this.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question for you.
Oh, yeah, he can come back up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So you can just stay there if you want, it's up to you. So the questions come up a few times now about why the planning board has not made this a type 1 action. That's why I said it doesn't concern you. So I just wanted to go through the list of type 1 actions with the planning board, with her attorney, and just so it's fully clear to everyone why this was an unlisted action and not a type 1 action, just so there's no longer any confusion out there. Okay, so this is from the DEC, this is the Seeker Handbook, this is the most recent finalized version of the Seeker Handbook. So this is all under 617.4 subsection B, and then the subsections that go along with that. So I can zoom in a little bit more, you can all see it on your screen there. Okay. So it would be a type 1 action if it's one of the following: the adoption of a municipality's land use plan, the adoption of any agency or comprehensive resource management plan, or the initial adoption of a municipality's comprehensive zoning regulations. We're not doing that.
No.
Number two, the adoption of changes in the allowable uses within any zoning district affecting 25 or more acres of the district.
That's a zoning change.
That's a zoning change, we're not doing that.
Not doing that.
The granting of a zoning change at the request of an applicant, and then the rest of it, they haven't requested a zoning change. Okay. Four, the acquisition, sale, lease, annexation, or other transfer of 100 or more contiguous acres of land by a state or local agency. That does not apply. Number five, construction of new residential units, and then the rest of that. They're not constructing residential units. Number six, activities other than the construction of residential facilities that meet or exceed any of the following thresholds or the expansion of existing non-residential facilities by more than 50% of any of the following thresholds. Okay, so it's possible there's something here. A project or action that involves a physical alteration of 10 acres.
According to information provided by the applicant, about eight acres.
About eight acres.
It's like nine, eight to nine disturbed.
Eight to nine acres disturbed. So not 10?
Not 10. And not close to 10.
Right, it's not 9.87.
9.8, you know, we'd err on the side of caution.
Sure. Okay. A project or action that would use ground or surface water in excess of 2 million gallons per day?
No.
That's not happening. Parking for 500 vehicles in a city town having a population of 150,000 or less?
No.
Not 500 parking spots. The next one is for municipalities over 150,000, wouldn't apply. Having a population of 150,000 or less facility with more than 100,000 square feet of gross floor area. This does not have 100,000 feet of gross floor area. And then the last one here is, again, for municipalities that are more than 150,000 people. Okay, so number seven. All right, any structure exceeding 100 feet above original ground level in a locality that has no zoning regulation pertaining to height. Okay. So this one can get a little confusing because the towers are greater than 100 feet, but we do have a zoning regulation pertaining to height. So if you could clarify this, Attorney Polidaro?
So it is odd that this is a requirement, I'm not sure why it doesn't just say exceeding 100 feet for everyone?
Sure.
Because if our height is at 35 feet and they're exceeding it, obviously, we've decided that 35 feet is the height that the town wants to see in most cases. So however, it's clear in a locality that has no zoning regulation pertaining to height, and this one, Dover, does. So not type 1.
Okay. All right, any unlisted action that includes a non-agricultural use occurring wholly or partially within an agricultural district? And exceeds 25% of any threshold established in this section? This is not taking place in an agricultural district?
No.
Okay. As of January 1, 2019, properties that the commissioner of OPRHP listed on the state registration of historic places are now considered for the purpose of a type 1 action. So again, not listed by the Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. And then, 10, any unlisted action that exceeds 25% of any threshold in this section occurring wholly or partly within or substantially contiguous to any publicly owned or operated parkland, recreation area, or designated open space, including any site on the registration of national, natural landmarks. So is this occurring wholly or partly within or substantially contiguous to any publicly owned or operated parkland, recreation area, or designated open space?
So I heard a member of the audience talk about the Great Swamp, but does the town own the Great Swamp, or it's in private hands?
No. That's in private hands.
So...
Publicly owned.
Yeah, it has to be publicly owned under this section.
Right. All right. And then number 11, any unlisted action that exceeds a type 1 threshold established by an involved agency. Does that apply?
The town of Dover does not have its own type 1 list. The code does have a section for environmental quality review, but you've not amended the type 1 list.
Okay. So in your legal opinion, and I think everyone sitting here reading it, is anything here a type 1 action?
So, I mean, we've reviewed this, all of the consultants, and we did not see a trigger for a type 1 action.
Okay. So therefore, it's an unlisted action?
It is unlisted because it's definitely not type 2.
Right.
But it's not on the type 1 list. So unlisted means it's not on the type 1 list, and it's not on the type 2 list.
Now, the fact that being unlisted does not change that we can treat it like an unlisted, like we can treat it like a type 1 action?
In fact, this board has taken the exact same steps that you would have if you had classified it as a type 1 action.
Please explain that further.
So type 1 actions are required to have a full environmental assessment form, and the applicant has provided a full environmental assessment form. Type 1 actions are required to undergo a coordinated review. That's where we send notice of the applicant, application to other involved agencies, so DEC, Department of Transportation. We took that step, and we did provide all of those agencies with notice of the application, and we've received comments back from all of those agencies. So far, all of the steps required for a type 1 action have been followed, and when it comes to determining significance, that's whether or not you want to adopt a negative declaration or a positive declaration, the same criteria is applied. The criteria set forth in the statute, we go through the questions together, and whether it's unlisted or type 1, we go through the exact same analysis.
Okay, thank you. Does any members of the planning board have any further comments or questions regarding type 1 actions, unlisted? Member Holmes?
I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Johnston.
Yeah, if you want to come back up. Actually, Member Ramon did ask first.
Go ahead, go ahead.
But again, no other questions for our attorney regarding this piece?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Polidaro. Member Ramon.
Okay, so I was wondering about your comments about the possibility of underground. And you said that, if I understand it, that if there was any failure within an underground system, that would be harder to repair than an above-ground system and could result in longer outages. It would seem to me, and maybe I need to be educated on this, that an underground system would be less prone to failure because you're not going to have storm damage, we're not in a high-risk area for earthquakes. Have you considered the risk factors of such potential damage underground versus overhead?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, I think we'll provide some further comments and discussion on this, but there has been some analyses done regarding the risk. And typically, it's a failure in the cable itself. There's two types, right? Failure in the cable itself where the insulation gets compromised and the cable effectively short-circuits itself.
What could cause that? Would it be age or frozen?
Age, heat cycles. So the cables themselves get very, very hot as they're underground, and so part of the design is to keep the spacing of the cables correct as well. But they do, they do run significantly hot, and there could be a compromise in the insulation around there that would cause it to short-circuit. So one is finding that short circuit, and then two is replacing it depending on the damage that's done when that short circuit happens. The other one that's typically is a dig-in where somebody is excavating somewhere and they dig into the trench itself. In this case, that's probably pretty remote.
Right.
Just because we don't expect there to be any further development on this site or on the Con Ed right-of-way. So we'll go back and look at cable failure rates and give you some statistics on that.
One of the things that we're seeing here, which may be related to climate change, is that we're having more frequent tornadoes in the area. And I would think that that would be a significant risk factor for above-ground structures. So just as a gut feeling, it seems to me that your risk factor would be less if you went underground.
Sure. And if you look at the type of damage that tornadoes, then we're going, and this isn't a high tornado area by any means, just because of the valleys. But, you know, typically, the structure itself is designed for a very high load-wind factor, and that's based on federal guidelines across the country. And there's different zones depending where you are. Obviously, Oklahoma is something completely different than New England, just from the proximity to tornadoes. The difference in a bigger sense is that conductor itself and the hardware, and that can be replaced in days. You know, even if you had to bring in an entire new set of things, they're readily available. The cable itself has to be remanufactured if there's not enough around, which is a specialty manufacturer, either, either there's one facility left in the U.S., the rest are all offshore. And then it's the digging up of the concrete trench and then pulling the cable through or replacing the conduit and pulling the cable through again. A lot of specialty type of work relative to the overhead, which is a much easier and faster...
Yeah, I understand the installation would be more complex underground. And you said something about the point of it being a short distance. Is there any reason that doing an underground system in a short distance is more of an issue than in a long distance? Or is it just that in cases where you've had long distances, you've been able to make use of existing structures that were already set up underground, like subways or whatever?
Yeah, no, in fact, that's almost rarely the case where you can use something that's existing. No, just in this short of a span, it's just typically not cost-effective to do it that way. And again, I'll find you some statistics on that.
Okay.
I would be really interested to see any kind of risk analysis of underground versus overhead.
Sure.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Member Ramon. Member Holmes?
Last meeting, there was a question raised about having the power station on the same side of the road as Cricket Valley Energy. Has this been investigated?
Yeah, so electrically, this Dover station had to be between the new Cricket Valley G-Energy substation, which is on the, get this right, the eastern side of the property. Between there, really around Route 22, and then towards the Connecticut border. So somewhere along that corridor of the power line, you can see the corridor that sort of stretches there. So the property that's available is that little bit of land just to the north, right where the arrow is there. There's actually a fairly extensive wetlands complex.
Which property?
You just moved the cursor there. So there's the white building on this Cricket Valley property.
Here.
Right there. So if you just go just north of there, like literally just north.
Closer than 22.
On the same parcel?
Yeah, but towards Route 22 now.
Towards 22. Can someone else move this? Because I'm not seeing what you're saying.
This area here.
Oh, that space. Okay.
That's really the only, so if you recall, there's an existing structure right there?
Yes.
We have to be on the right side of that.
The east side of that.
Electrically, you're connecting.
All right, you said at the previous, I believe you said at the previous meeting, it needs to be between Cricket Valley Energy and the Connecticut-New York State line.
That's correct.
Okay.
So you're saying there's not enough space between there and 22?
Yep.
And also, having it down on this part of their property?
Again, connecting back to the right-of-way.
Because you have to have something coming down and then coming back up?
That's correct, yeah.
And so it could be on any parcel east of Route 22? Again, what you're looking to have done, not that we're suggesting that, I'm just...
No, no, no. So we did spell out some criteria of what we were looking for for our property. Proximity to Route 22 is a key one, just from getting the equipment, both construction and materials to the site. A certain size, I believe our minimum threshold was 10 acres, but that would be sort of wall-to-wall construction. As you know, we just talked about eight-point-something acres of disturbance here. So there were several things that sort of put us here, and I think, you know, lastly, it was a land that was available. It was, we had a willing owner, and it is in ACO zone. So not that, that's a determining factor, but that would certainly help us make the decision.
Just my thoughts were that if you could keep it on the same side of the road, you wouldn't have to worry about going underground. You know what I mean?
Yep.
Transmission lines are already there, you know?
Yeah, we, I mean, we did look at that. Ultimately, that property is owned by Cricket Valley, and so we'd have to negotiate with them. Again, this property was available, and so that made sense for us to have our own control of the land and everything else.
Thank you. Member Holmes?
Thank you.
Isn't that portion there, where you're looking north of Cricket Valley, actually controlled by Con Ed as well?
So Con Ed has an easement on the property.
But they control it.
So, yeah, so where the transmission line overhead goes?
Yeah.
You can just see there, up to that structure. So Con Ed does have the rights to that strip of land, which would further push us towards Route 22.
Yeah, so not just the rights, but they control it very strongly because even as a town, we can't get on that site because it's Con Ed.
Again, we'd have to have all the same electrical clearances for safety, and clearly, there's just not enough room in that area.
Okay. Member Holmes, anything? Member Williams, any comments, questions? Member Lam?
See a building there.
One more thing I had written down that I meant to ask. So in one of the documents here, it mentions probably with the undergrounding, the cost we pass on to the ratepayers. Who would be the ratepayers for this?
Good question, and it's a fairly complex problem, but I'll try and give you the Cliff Notes version of it. So any infrastructure at the bulk-level transmission that's built in the state, whether it's a project in Buffalo, whether it's in New York City, or whether it's upstate New York or here in Dover, is shared across every person who pays an electricity bill within the state. So even if there's no projects going on in Dover, there's still projects somewhere else. And in your bill, you get two sets of parts of your bill. You get a transmission and you get a generation. And so this particular asset gets lumped in with the transmission asset. And so this particular asset gets lumped in with the transmission asset. So me as the owner of that property paying with the building, I would, I would end up paying a fraction of a penny more, um, for, for that asset. Now, it's offset by older assets that are taken off, the, the total thing. So this all gets spread around the entire state. Different regions pay a little bit different amounts depending what's there. Um, but it is sort of socialized, if you will, across the entire state.
So if your $80 million project is, becomes a $90 million project or $95 million project because you go underground, that additional 10, 15 million is spread out amongst the 18 million New Yorkers?
That's correct.
Okay. So just want to be clear, the rate, it's not as though your documentation wasn't trying to say it's going to cost a lot more around here because of doing that.
No, no.
It's going to cost a very small amount for everyone in the state.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, that was it, uh, for me. Um, I guess we'll... Yeah, go ahead.
I, I had a question about, you said if you go underground that you would need more towers? Can you explain that and what is that based on?
Yeah, so again, as I discussed a little bit earlier, we did some design work on how many cables we'd have to have to go underground. And it's, it ends up being two for, per phase. So it's six cables that would connect from the right of way into the station and six cables that would connect from the station back out to the right of way. They're, you know, approximately, I don't know, a small watermelon or a large melon, cantaloupe, whatever, you know, in diameter.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a significant amount of space. There's also determinations based on heat transfer between the cables. There needs to be a certain amount of isolation, um, to make, to make the cables, cables work. Um, so, so if you think about an overhead line on one structure can pass overhead to, to a single structure on the right of way, if you take those away, you now have to have a series of structures within the station that would take and put it into six cables underground. And then on, on this, on the right of way side, you'd have to have four major structures over there, um, which would all have to be leveled and, and, you know, took the right infrastructure built around it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for those, and those are called riser structures. And as they come up, then it would be split into the various components, then attach back overhead. Um, so it's not a, a simple solution like it's proposed today.
So I'm just trying to understand, the riser structures, how tall are they compared to the towers you have now?
Right. So the, the existing tower we have now is, is proposed on the right of way at about 145 feet. Um, we'd have to raise the ground level up to make sure that all four of the new structures, and they're about 80 to 90 feet, um, depending on final design, which, which we don't have.
So even if the wires were underground, you would still need towers and you would need more towers?
That's correct.
It would be a little bit lower.
Little bit lower. We need four instead of one.
On the north side of the?
Correct.
Cricket, okay.
Two on each, two on each, the incoming and outgoing.
So two on each side of Cricket Hill Road?
Sorry, before on, four on, on the right of way on the north side of Cricket Hill Road. Um, two relative to going back to Cricket Valley and two relative to going to Long Mountain.
I see.
As we cut the line.
Right.
And Joe, have you reviewed this? Does that make engineering sense?
It's typical.
It's typical, okay.
It's basically, because the cables have to be separated for heat transfer and for isolation, it forces you into a larger, uh, conduits. Your, your duct bag, for lack of better, if it's a, it's actually a concrete duct bag you're putting it in, it becomes quite huge. And because of that separation, you have different towers, you can't just bring them back together into four cables there right next to each other. They have to be separated out.
Right.
And overhead, you don't have the same issue.
Correct.
Okay. Attorney Paladaro, anything further?
I, I had asked, um, the applicant to provide more information on the assessed value of other similar properties, just as additional evidence that they had not requested a pilot or that they were in the right ballpark as far, as far as what they were proposing as an assessed value. Um, so I'm hoping they can get some additional information to us on that.
Okay.
On other properties such as, other projects such as this?
Yes.
Transco-owned assets.
Or I get, yeah, or anything built recently that's not Transco. I, I don't know if there would be enough Transco-owned assets to get...
Not sure I, someone would divulge that information to me, but I can...
If there's a...
Probably a matter of public record with people paying taxes for a recently developed project.
Yep.
That's it.
Okay. Engineer Berger, anything further?
No.
Okay. Planner Werner?
I would just add on to when we had that discussion about seeker actions, just, um, you know, when this application came in, uh, October 21, um, they submitted the full EAF form, knowing that there was going to be a lot of attention and a lot of issues to deal with. We didn't ask them to do that. They submitted it on their own, even though it's unlisted. I told this board, we can continue with that path and that's fine. It provides for a more thorough review in my mind. Um, and at that first meeting, we identified straight up all the issues that we, we knew they had to start looking at. Noise, uh, visual impacts, wetlands, certain endangered species. Um, so it's been, like Victoria said, it's been proceeding like it's, you know, been a type one from the beginning. Um, and I would also add, I think someone, there was an email about asking to see the part two and three EAF. So just to clear up how the process works, the part one form comes from the applicant. The part two and three, the board prepares, um, and the applicant shouldn't prepare part two. Usually it's, you know, my job to do a draft. We discuss it with the board. We go through the checklist. The areas that would be checked off with moderate to large impact have already kind of been screened by my office and we, we already relayed that information to the applicant at the first meeting. These are the issues we need you to focus on and study further. Um, so when we get to the point when you're ready to determine significance, we'll, I'll have a draft part two, um, I'll have a draft part three, and we can go through all that.
Okay. And, uh, for either yourself or Attorney Paladaro, that would take place after the close of public hearings?
Yeah, so there's no requirement that you hold a public hearing before completing seeker?
Mm-hmm.
In fact, an application is not considered complete until seeker has been completed.
Mm-hmm.
However, uh, we thought it was very important to get input from the public...
Right.
On all the potential impacts, because a lot of times they bring things to the board's attention that, you know, we don't, we can't know everything. And so, um, we can complete seeker while the public hearing is open, or we can close the hearing and, and consider seeker.
Okay. All right. Um, okay, I think that's it from our consultants. Anybody have any comments or questions based on what our consultants have said? All right. So, um, at this time, uh, I'll need a motion to continue, uh, the public hearing for NY Transco LLC. Uh, I need a motion, motion made by Member Holmes.
Second.
Seconded by Member Roman. All in favor of continuing the public hearing?
To what date?
No, we're going to open it, like, continue it now.
Oh. Do that again.
Motion made by Member Holmes, seconded by Member Roman, to continue the public hearing at this time. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. So this public hearing is open again. Um, the, uh, rules are, are the same as, uh, last time. Um, members of the public have, uh, three minutes. Uh, that's a policy adopted by the town. Uh, the, uh, and as the chair, that is what we're going to be going with right now. The planning board is, as always, welcome to overrule me. You just have to make a motion, a second, and then you vote. Okay? So, um, we're going to get to the people in the public hearing at, uh, in just a minute. Um, I'm certainly going to be voting to continue this public hearing beyond today. There's clearly more that needs to be discussed. Uh, and I look forward to hearing from, um, uh, the people on the list, uh, what you have to say. And, um, you know, the, the, the members of the planning board, our consultants, um, certainly, you know, are listening and, um, you know, we will, um, you know, certainly take into account what you're saying. Uh, I mean, a recent example is we, we had the, the public hearing on Stony Brook and a few months back, someone made a, a very good comment that it seemed like no one really thought of before. And so that, we, you know, asked the applicant to, to, you know, consider that. So, um, so, uh, we'll get to, uh, what I'm going to do is call your name and then also the next person, so you can queue up behind, um, hopefully save everybody some time. Uh, so first we have, uh, Charlie Quimby, and then second we have Benjamin, looks like Schulz. And again, I apologize if I mispronounce your name.
Good evening, Charlie Quimby, 81 Cricket Hill Road. Dear Chairman, Cortina, and Board Members, uh, you, you brought this up tonight, so I'm glad you did. Uh, over the last several months, we've asked the planning board to designate this a type one action and require an environmental impact statement, not an EAF, an EIS. That's what we want. We want a hard look at this project and the near certain potential for adverse impacts that this project presents. The following are examples of type one actions in the rulebook that you put on the screen. I will summarize the codes for the sake of time, but I will submit the full text to the planning board. So, section six, number six, in the town of, in a town with a population of 150,000 persons or less, a facility with more than 100,000 square feet of gross floor area. They've said the site is eight acres. That's 350,000 square feet, well over this threshold. The next one, uh, is regarding the, uh, physical alteration of 10 acres or more. Transco says 8.8, 8.3 acres. By reviewing the drawings, including areas where the trees need to be cleared, it looks well over that. Next one, uh, any structure exceeding 100 feet above original ground level in a locality without a zoning regulation pertaining to height. I'd like clarification on that. These towers are 140 to 145 feet. Number nine, any unlisted action, and I'm going to summarize for the benefit of time, that exceeds 25% of any threshold established in this section occurring wholly or partially within or substantially continuous to. Any historic building that has been determined by SHPO as eligible to be listed on the state register of historic places. I'm going to submit a site that is eligible, and this should not be considered together with any SHPO determinations. Now, in, in determining whether proposed type one or unlisted action may have significant adverse impacts, that being magnitude and importance, the impacts that may be reasonably expected to result from the proposed action must be considered. When determining magnitude and importance factors such as severity, size, and additional, uh, additional social and environmental consequences must be considered.
Seconds.
The impairment of environmental characteristics of the Great Swamp, a critical environmental area. Doctor, Dr. Utter from Frogs is a respected expert in this field, has discussed much of this in detail. Uh, the proposed project would impair character and quality of exist, of the existing community and neighborhood character. The substantial use, uh, change in use or intensity of use, land, of land including agricultural, open space, and recreational resources, or in its capacity to support existing uses. The potential adverse impact to the aquifer, our water source. Do we know the depth of the footings for the proposed towers? Transco has stated that the water table is six and a half feet below. I would imagine footings would be much deeper than six and a half feet for towers of that height. The proposed site is a former junkyard which has never been remediated. In all probability, liquids such as oil, gasoline, diesel, coolant, and other hazardous materials have leaked into the ground or have been intentionally dumped. Proper testing by a third party to, to Transco is essential. Transco has also proposed installing towers on the northeast side of Cricket Hill Road, adjacent to the site of the, uh, former town dump, a state-registered superfund site. Again, we must have third-party testing performed, or any soil or groundwater testing conducted on that site.
Please finish your thought, Mr. Quimby.
I'm almost done. Uh, public need must be demonstrated, and a public survey as part of an EIS would be useful to determine this. This is essential and it would be the public who, it would be essential because it would be the public who would bear the burden of impacts. The planning board as lead agency must consider this a type one action with an environmental impact study. Hire experts for, uh, experts of her own to evaluate this project. And this is my last closing. In closing, I have reviewed every single document for this proposed project. In most cases, I have looked at them several times. I have made notes, I have researched, and feel strongly that every piece of information reports and surveys and analysis that presented, uh, presented by Transco needs to be reevaluated. Everything from the EIF straight through Transco's September 30 submission, where their appraiser says homes with a view of a substation are more valuable than those without a view of a substation. This is not a joke. This is really what they said. When you start looking at more of the technical data and reports of, for wetlands and soil and testing, it begs the question if we can trust any of their data. This is why we need experts and proper studies for us. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I look forward to working with the town and residents to make our voices and concerns heard.
Thank you, Mr. Quimby.
All right.
So Benjamin Schulz, and then, uh, I think it's Janet Apuzo?
Yeah.
You have three minutes.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the town board for continuing the hearing and thank you, Chairman, for, um, making another one as well. And, um, uh, really appreciate the time. Um, yeah, I think, um, I, I own a small farm business in the area and, um, along with several other, um, in town, I think we're all, you know, concerned about, um, the impacts of these sort of, um, sort of power infrastructure on the area. You know, we count on this area being as clean and pristine as possible. We're growing food in the area. So, um, these sort of projects are a real concern, uh, for small business owners, especially farmers. Um, so, yeah, I'm also, um, like Charlie, advocating for a positive declaration from the planning board on this project. Um, I wasn't aware that Transco was, uh, um, proposing this project until a neighbor told me. Um, part of that is that the, the signs that they put out are in very tiny print, and when you're, you know, running an errand or, um, you know, going to work or wherever, you don't, you don't, you know, have to pull over the side of the road to then read the tiny print to see what is actually going on. I mean, it could be like a political sign or something like that, something else. I didn't think that was, um, very good faith on their part. Um, also, you know, uh, kind of like Cricket Valley, I don't think that are, you know, I appreciate the donations that these projects have made to the fire department, but, um, the Wingdale Fire Department is not, is not capacitated to really, you know, take on an electrical fire like, like might, what might happen in this project. Um, you know, I don't, I don't think that $30,000 is enough to really compensate the Wingdale Fire Department in this case. Um, I'm not sure what would happen if, if there was, if there was an explosion on the site. Um, and then I guess another concern is, um, you know, we've all acknowledged it's going to be dynamiting on the site. But if the, if the site is not fully remediated from being a, a dump, you know, what happens to, you know, uh, dynamiting? And where's all this waste go when it's, um, exploded? You know, cleaning up tires is one thing, but actually, um, you know, getting deep down into it and making sure that stuff that's buried underneath is, is remediated is really important. Um, just want to point out that there's, you know, a public high school, a middle school, um, within half a mile of this site, and also a raw milk dairy, um, right across the street. Um, and I just wanted to repeat, like, um, like I said the last meeting, that, um, Transco is a multinational corporation. They're based in London, England. Um, or they're, they're the corporation that owns them, which is a national grid. And they do have the economic capacity to, to, um, you know, make sure all the bases are covered when they do projects in a town like ours. Um, I guess to sum it up, I'm, I'm concerned about the overall trend, um, in Dover. It's, um, I'm concerned that, uh, New York City is, is trying to eliminate a lot of their, um, their, their power infrastructure and then dumping it on small towns like Dover, um, so that they don't have to look at it, they don't have to deal with it, so it's kind of outsourced around the city. Um, and, uh, I just want to point that out as a general trend. And thank you very much for my, for your time.
Thank you. All right. Then after that, we'll have David Pierri. Again, I apologize. Go ahead. Say your name, please.
Janet Apuzo. I just want to, I want to thank the board and the advisors and everybody for coming here. I don't really have a lot to say. I, I think that Cricket Valley, um, power plant coming here has caused a lot of harm and decreased the air value and caused a lot of illness. And I don't know if, how these projects are really fully oversighted. Uh, it seems like a lot of information is just accepted, and then you kind of, oh, you're going to get all this money in taxes, and, you know, whatever is going to happen is going to happen. So you seem to be putting in your due diligence, and I think that that's really important. But transformer stations do cause illness. but transformer stations do cause illness. There are researches, there has been research that has proven that communities around transformers are, do get cancer and do experience physical illness. And it seems like these, these are enormous projects, 140 feet. I don't know how, they're not gonna have lights on them at night if planes aren't gonna crash into them. I mean, they need to have lights, you know, how you're gonna remediate the area that it's on a dump site, that seems to be a serious problem, that it's right next to a refugee wildlife refuge with endangered species, and that doesn't seem to be really on, like, that important, and that I think really should be. So the health of your communities, both the plants and the animals, the kids, and the people, really need to be considered in these projects, because once they're done, they're done and the damage is done, and they're, they're not really benefiting much except for an infrastructure which, you know, could most definitely be done in a way that's healthier for your community. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. After David, we have Kim Fracksek.
My name is Iris. I'm David's wife. I live on 69 Cricket Hill Road.
I didn't think you were David, so.
No, I know. I, in listening to everything here, and I thank you, I thank the board for taking the time and doing your due diligence to really take the time to review all of this, but in listening to what Mr. Johnson said about the towers being over 145 feet, or the cables being underground, it doesn't sound like it's beneficial for us at, at all as a community. And at this point, it almost makes me feel as a, as a resident of Dover for 34 years, Dover is not for sale. We really need to really watch out what we're doing to our community, because our children are here, our neighbors are here, and what we really need is a supermarket, things that are really important. We already have, don't need another tower hanging over us. So please consider this, because it's for us, it's for all of us. It's not just for me and my, my neighbors, but it's all of Dover. Thank you for your time.
Sir, go ahead. You have three minutes.
As you can see, I'm David. I live at 169 Cricket Hill Road, and my concern is that everything that I've heard is that what's going up and how tall it's gonna be, but I haven't heard about how deep it's going to be, and how much damage is it gonna do, if any? Would it affect the water system? I live at the top of Cricket, Cricket Hill, so maybe it doesn't affect me, but I, I had a well put in once, and, and it, it was a drag to just, to get a permit and inspectors to come out and check this out, and yes, they got approved, but this is worse than a well, and I don't understand why we're not looking into how deep this is going into. You know, will it affect the aquifer, or it's going downstream? What's it affecting? We just keep hearing everything going up, and if we approve and everyone's happy with, oh, okay, so it's only gonna be, but so tall, oh, they're gonna cover it up and we won't see it, but we don't see what's happening on the ground, and that's what I'd like to find out, what's happening on the ground. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. After Kim Fracksek, we have Jill Fieldstein.
Hi, thank you so much for extending this hearing.
Please say your name correctly for the record. I apologize.
No problem. I've been battling with it my whole life. My name is Kim Frachek. I am the Director of Sane Energy Project, where a 12-year-old New York state-based organization representing 24,000 New Yorkers, and 685 of them are from this area in and around Dover, who oppose extractive industries such as fossil fuels and work toward distributed and community-owned renewable energy and energy efficiency. I am here to urge the Town Planning Board of Dover, please issue a positive declaration to trigger a full environmental impact statement, and to take pause and consider the cumulative projects that are being proposed for Dover. And also, the fact that they want to offer you $1.9 million to you is an insult. This is what extractive projects like this are cited in environmental justice in disadvantaged communities. National Grid, who's the owner of Transco, their CEO, John Pettigrew, he makes $4,300 per hour. Okay? $1.9 million is changed to them found in the couch cushions, even if it is significant to Dover. I traveled to Dover tonight from New York City, because this is of utmost importance to a much larger geography than Dover. This board tonight has the power to take a stand to support the health and safety of this region, and further down the transmission paths to New York City or to Connecticut. Please don't allow the existence of Cricket Valley Fracked Gas Power Plant to be the footprint to open the door to mass industrialization of the site of organic farms and dairies, and one of the largest freshwater wetlands in New York State. I want to connect the dots here for you. My testimony will most likely exceed three minutes, so I will send you my written testimony for your consideration.
Thank you.
So feel free to stop me if I go over time.
You have one minute.
Okay. I want to explain to you the issue that segmentation can negatively affect the town of Dover's future, and how what is being proposed for Dover is directly connected with our fight further downstate. We have a parallel issue happening in Brooklyn. Since 2017, Sane Energy Project has been working to stop a massive expansion of fracked gas in National Grid's downstate territory. We learned through working with allies and attorneys at Earth Justice and the Environmental Justice Director at the University Network of Human Rights, the Department of Environmental Conservation allowed National Grid to call the shots and did not perform a secret review of the, of a liquefied fracked gas facility and a pipeline that's directly connecting to it. Now with expert testimony from the New York State Climate Action Council and medical experts, the DEC is now taking a serious look that their negative declaration did not follow New York State law, because we filed a lawsuit against National Grid and the Department of Environmental Conservation for not following their due diligence.
Please finish your thought.
Okay, I'll, I'll just do this one paragraph. Since our, since our lawsuit, it has sparked 100% of elected officials from the city level all the way up to the federal level. Senator Chuck Schumer and Congressmember Niti Velazquez and Caroline Maloney have publicly opposed what's happening with National Grid's project in, in Brooklyn. And I just want to say, like, this project is, is going to make way for a large swath of industrialization, including the Iroquois Pipeline. This is, this is a problem. Cricket Valley Fracked Gas Power Plant should not exist, and because it does, don't let these companies come in and bully this town. Like, we are with you too. And, and also, like, the, 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 the ratepayers are gonna pay for this, so they get to come in and make all this profit and then charge us through our monthly bills? Like, no way, no way. Don't let it happen. Don't let it happen. Trust me.
Thank you, ma'am.
I just wanna, I just wanna clarify that there's no payment. This is not a pay-to-play situation. We were earlier looking at the potential tax, tax assessment of the property. We, we were looking at it from the perspective of making sure they're paying their fair share from a, a property tax perspective, not a payment.
This is not a open debate. Thank you. Bernie Polidaro is making a point that it's not a one-time $1.9 million payment, it's that they would pay, by their estimation, $1.9 million in taxes each year, and that's that. So next we have Jill Fieldstein, and then Frank Mancuso.
Yes.
Okay. You, you after Ms. Fieldstein. You have three minutes.
Hi, Jill Fieldstein, 39 Northeast Mountain Road. I've heard the term "due diligence" thrown out a few times tonight, and I want to put my comments under the heading of "due diligence." On January 31st of this year, I sent the planning board an email in which I listed a number of questions related to the Transgro project. I'm resubmitting my January 31st email tonight for inclusion in the public hearing record. I've given Marilyn a copy, and I thank you for that. Among other things, my email included questions about things that have been talked about tonight, how much taxes will Transco pay, whether Transco's proposed site is the only and best site for, for the transfer station, if it does have to be located where it is, could the lines be buried, whether a balloon test could be made mandatory to assist people like me who have trouble visualizing plans, so we can see exactly how tall these towers are. My questions have been asked by many people in these hearings, and Transco now has provided some written responses to some of these questions about taxes, burying the lines, number of other issues. But there's one question I asked back in January that is my estimation among the most important, and that question is posed to you, the planning board. I asked, will the planning board hire independent consultants to review and assess the project's impacts to Dover's environment and to Dover's general well-being? This board has the authority to cut, conduct such an independent review, and also to require Transco to pay for this review. This board authorized such an independent review during the Cricket Valley Energy Project, and it's my understanding that Cricket Valley was required to pay for that independent review. I think the people of Dover deserve to know if independent experts agree or disagree with Transco's assessment that burying the lines is not a feasible option. Independent experts should determine whether a balloon test should be required. Independent experts should determine whether, whether or not there are negative environmental impacts for this project. Independent experts should determine what the tax revenues are going to be, whether or not property values will be impacted by the presence of a transfer station. And the experts should also look, do a cost-benefit analysis with respect to the amount of taxes Transco is going to pay. Is that the, it, will the taxes make up for the loss, potential loss of property value and other income this town is slated, may lose because of the presence of the transportation, transfer station? So as I did in January, I'm asking you, the planning board, to hire independent consultants to provide you with opinions on the important questions being raised by the public, to make sure you have all the information you need to make informed decisions about the Transgro project. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to say one thing. I mean, our experts are sitting here. They are independent. Okay. So we can talk with each of them to see if they feel they need further expertise than what they already provide. So Frank Mancuso, and then Philip Van Buren.
Hi, my name is Frank Mancuso, and I'm not gonna make a legal argument, but I have fought utilities in federal courts for over 20 years, and they're evil. And so I'd like to talk about, I'm kind of reminded of the god of Spinoza, who said, "Don't look for me in temples, look for me in the mountains and woods. That's how I show my love for you." So he's here, in Dover's mountains and woods, but he's not the god of Spinoza, he's an evil god of power. And I wouldn't fear the god of blight and, and power, I would fear the god whose woods are being taken from future generations.
So Philip Van Buren, and then Stephen Vincent.
Philip Van Buren, 54 Askins Road. I'm here in two capacities. One, I am a director of the Oblong Land Conservancy, and we have a nature preserve, the Karuth Preserve, which is downhill and just a little downstream along the Swamp River, that would be direct recipient of any runoff or leaching of chemicals, metals, petroleum products from the dump site. I have concerns about the testing that has been done there in asserting that the site is clean, both the number and the thoroughness of the testing, and its correlation with aerial photography showing the location of where vehicles were stored. So it seems, it, it seems to me that there's a lot to be desired in producing a reliable set of data on what is in the soil of this site, of which 8.9 acres are to be disturbed. So there's, I have that concern, but as a, just as a citizen of Dover, my concern is about the cumulative impacts of this project. There's a lot of ways that this project can lead to more specifically power, but other deleterious industrial facilities coming to Dover. One way is through things that are actually functionally related. This project, it turns out, is functionally related to Cricket Hill, it having to be between Cricket, I mean Cricket Valley and the Connecticut border. Yet, this project was not reviewed in the review for Cricket Valley, as I understand. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
It's a separate project.
Right, it's called separate, as opposed to segmented, as opposed to it being another thing, as part of a power system that is all integrated. And there's, I would want to know what other facilities are going to be required or enabled by, if, if this town approves this project, and particularly if this planning board allows this project to go through without serious environmental scrutiny. There's another level on which there are direct causal consequences between this project and more power facilities, and that is at the political level at which the determinations are made on a statewide basis as to where to locate projects. Dover's been a target, and the political costs are less for building a project here than, say, in Pleasant Valley. And so it all comes our way. And to what extent would approval of this project, or would waiving of significant environmental review tend to precipitate more energy projects being planned for Dover? And then thirdly, there's the simple fact that once you start degrading the environment, creating a blemish, then it's harder to make the case that the next project is degrading the environment, because it's already degraded. And that cumulative effect adds up, and it translates into the reputation of the town, it translates into the property values of the town. When I bought my property in Dover, I was advised by the real estate agent to steer clear of Dover. I bought here nonetheless, but it's, Dover has a reputation as being a dumping ground, and if the elected leadership of the town continues to not serve the interests of the people of Dover, but instead other interests, then I'm afraid that we're just continuing down a, a spiraling black hole here. Thank you very much.
Just one thing, just, what's the, do you have the address of that Oblong Land Conservancy property that you referenced? Or where? What do I find?
Yeah, it's, it's, I can point it to it on Matt here.
Sure. Is it Matt farther?
For the record, though, an address would be helpful.
There is no address.
It's just, oh, okay. So is this parcel here?
Yeah. Oh, no, we'll just look for that.
I see. Okay.
My name is Steve.
Sorry.
Steve Vincent, I live in 60.
One second.
Okay.
Okay. I, I can see why it doesn't have an address. Thank you.
Yeah, it's landlord.
All right. Mr. Vincent, please.
I'm Steve Vincent. I live on Dover Furnace Road. I, I've been here all my whole life. Just finding out tonight that the, the cost is spread over everybody. I really don't care how much it costs to go underground. It's spread over everybody. We don't have to see the towers, mainly the towers on the, where the junkyard used to be, so it's spread over everybody. I've done duck banks down in Westchester as an operating engineer. Yeah, it costs more. That's the cost of doing business. This is the problem we have with a 30-year-old zoning code.
Mr. Vincent, if you could just direct it towards the planning board.
Oh, sorry. This is the problem we have with a 30-year-old zoning code. You know that. It's currently being worked on to tighten it up. It is an allowable use in this zone. In the future, it's gonna be a lot different. But you have to understand that we're dealing with something that's antiquated, and this is a golden opportunity for a company to come in and do this, because we don't have the laws restricting it. I would like to see maybe other optional sites if the line goes into Connecticut, maybe put it somewhere in Connecticut. There could be, you know, other, other sites that are more conducive to its place. Like I said, the cumulative impact of Cricket Valley, the additional set of Con Ed Towers that were really not part of the original project of Cricket Valley, which are taller and a totally different structure that was added on later, is another eyesore. So, you know, I agree with the people on Cricket Hill, the towers, they really don't So, you know, I agree with the people on Cricket Hill, the towers, they really don't want to see them, and neither do I. And the cost effectiveness of going underground really is nominal because they're not paying for it. We are. So I guess that's pretty much it.
All right. All right, next, we have Ed Friend and then Frank Florelli.
My name is Ed Friend. I actually moved up here about two months ago and kind of walked into this situation here. I want to share a little cautionary tale, I guess. We came from Nowak, Connecticut, right on the Long Island Sound. We were a couple blocks from the Nowak River and maybe about three-quarters of a mile from where the river met the Long Island Sound. And at that point, there was a power station there, an old coal-burning power station called Manresa. It was called one of the Dirty Five in Connecticut. And it was eventually shut down, but my wife grew up there where we lived. We moved into her parents' house several years ago. But she grew up there in the '60s, and there were a lot of cases of things like asthma and various other problems. My wife's family, her and her three sisters have all had various breathing and cancer and all kinds of stuff like that from this place. And, you know, back then, '60s, '70s, they didn't really make that connection like we do now. But we know better now. We know better now. And it's time to really, you know, look at the environmental issues that these projects, this one and the other ones that are coming up, could cause going forward, not just for our generation, but for future generations, to the environment, to the beautiful wilderness. Let me tell you, I came up here, and I look out my window, and there's a mountain. I look out the window on the other side, there's a mountain. It's just gorgeous here. And all my life, I grew up in Stanford in Darien before I moved to Nowak. All my life, I've drank city water. And drinking out of a well for the first time in, well, I'm 62 years old, drinking out of a well for the first time, it was a revelation. It really was, you could tell the difference. It was just better. And we cannot allow our aquifer to be contaminated in any way. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So Frank and then Jennifer Lazaro.
Frank Florelli, I live on Sherman Hill Road, and I would like to say, how does this benefit the town of Dover other than another eyesore? And then also, I understand this benefits Connecticut and New England. Why not put it on the Connecticut side? Or does Gaylordsville and Kent don't want it there? Not in my backyard. Is that the reason? And also, the gentleman mentioned about rock blasting. What is that going to do to the wells in the vicinity?
You're asking about the aquifer, the wells, the aquifer. That's what you're asking.
It could very well damage their wells. And also, we're opening up a doorway here. We already opened it with Cricket Hill. We're going to open it up more. So like the other gentleman said, once you open it, why does Dover have to get dumped on all the time? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Lazaro. Confederate Drive is my address. Good evening. First, I just want to show my support for all those who share their feelings and fears for this project thus far. I personally have networked with numerous residents over the past couple weeks, and some still are completely unaware of this project at hand. There was also a handful that were under the false impression through word of mouth when I inquired that the state is forcing this to happen and that our local community and government does not have a say. It would be helpful to clear up that misconception this evening. One thing I did not come across was a single resident who was in favor of this project. Not that there isn't anyone in favor, but I've yet to hear it firsthand. Considering the total amount of people I've communicated with over the past six-plus months, that speaks volumes. I just want to reiterate that the sheer number of residents who have expressed their concerns via all different avenues to the board since we first learned of this plan is a red flag that we need to approach this project with extreme caution and attention to detail. This project will forever and permanently alter our community in so many different ways. To not give it the scrutiny and careful research it deserves and not utilize all the tools we have available would be an injustice. I have four items I would like to point out this evening. I'll just mention the comment about if the wires were underground and there was a long-term outage, we would suffer, and we would suffer locally. Being that this project does not provide any electricity to this community whatsoever, I don't see how we would suffer locally. There's also no employment locally, so I don't think, we could take that out of the equation as well. Another point, blasting. The concern was for the environmental damage if there was blasting for the underground project. But one of our concerns all along has been the blasting to create the plan with the towers. I had a question with regard to the outage. I know we discussed last time there's a third unit that's being built, so should there ever be an outage? We have all the materials there already just to get it right back online quickly. So I'm wondering if this third facility that's not going to be utilized, that will be on standby, will be able to jump in should the wires be buried and then have a problem and there's an outage. Another point, and I know other people have touched on this, Transco has to go in the spot that they outlined tonight very specifically, and that just speaks to our point that you let one company like this in, you let them all in. Because what if the next company comes and says, "Well, I need to be between Transco and Winged Elementary School"? Then we're kind of stuck. So that's also a concern. I'm a teacher, many of you know that, and when I hear that putting up two or three or nine towers is not a big deal, there's already three towers, that's like one of my students saying a bad word and somebody else repeating it and saying, "Well, he did it. It's okay." The next point is with regard to the visuals. I know we discussed it last time. I'll try to be quick.
Thank you.
I also emailed the board and some others that we would like those visuals, not the maps from a year ago, but current ones of what this facility would look like. I imagine with today's technology, we can get an accurate picture of what this would look like, and even a model would be helpful for us. So I'll go ahead and wrap it up now. In closing, there's nothing more our children deserve right now after being away at work for most of the day than having us home for dinner to do homework and to talk to them in this evening. But we see the big picture and the need to protect their future and the community in which they call home. We have shared countless concerns with the board and provided tremendous amount of research from others who walked in our shoes in the past and have learned from their mistakes. It is good to hear some of those concerns addressed tonight, so thank you for that. Please continue to use your position of leadership and authority to make sure we dot all of our i's and preserve our beautiful scenic rural community and leave it better than we found it. Thank you for your time.
All right. That is everyone on the list. If there's anyone who would like to speak, now would be the time. Just please come to the podium and state your name and address. If everybody could queue up who'd like to speak rather than one person, another person, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Cortean and planning board members. My name is Jessica Wade. I grew up in Dover, and it's still my home. My comments are in regards to the environmental justice. Obviously, we must keep in mind there are numerous factors to consider regarding a potential environmental justice area, which according to contacts at the DEC and EPA, Dover identifies as such. Transco states that their site is within the edge but not entirely in an environmental justice area. According to a TRC report from July 2022, they added a half-mile buffer, not including the school, which skews data. However, after discussions we've had with Environmental Protection Agency, they argue that the use of a buffer may not be appropriate as it pertains to this area. The EPA just suggests technically, anything above a 50% threshold, not 80%, used by Transco, is above the national state median and still worthy of considering environmental justice impacts. And in many areas, we are well above that. Here are some figures recently provided by the EPA for the surrounding area of 2238 Route 22. And please remember that 50% threshold, what the EPA said, would be worthy of environmental justice impacts. Three of the EJ indexes, lead paint, underground storage tanks, and wastewater discharge, were above the 60th percentile compared to the nation. The EJ index for wastewater discharge was in the 70th percentile compared to the state of New York. National percentiles for socioeconomic indicators are Dover is 73rd percentile for low-income populations, 76th percentile for unemployment rate, 78th percentile for linguistically isolated, 75th percentile for children under the age of five. We have a low life expectancy, estimated to be 80th to 90th in national percentile. We're designated as a medically underserved area. Two schools within the census block, including Dover High School, that is within one mile of the project site. Several water discharges, including one that is a quarter of a mile from the project site located at Cricket Valley Energy Center. A TRC report stated that the surrounding community does not have a combination of high environmental burdens. Do we not consider Cricket Valley Energy a high environmental burden? Because we should. We should consider the impacts the gas plant already has to this area. The Climate Act released a new mapping tool. This also shows us as a disadvantaged community in many of the top categories. And while the town's attorneys and Transco feel that there won't be substantial pollution, we must consider the construction phase. We cannot dismiss that. It's hard to argue that we're not an environmental justice area. When most of these projects come knocking on our door, they often pass, and I wonder why. I'm encouraging our planning board to reach out and work with the EPA directly regarding their insight as it pertains to Dover and to refrain from making a decision based on an environmental justice report prepared for and submitted by the applicant. Many of our residents have poured hours into research and have sought outside counsel. The planning board would benefit greatly truly from hearing what the residents' concerns are and what we want for the future of this town. We live here, we truly care about our home, and we want what is best. The power and utility companies don't live here. In the end, this decision isn't going to affect their families and their properties day to day. It will affect us, and the residents should have the say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wade, I just need to write down your street address.
Oh, sure. It's Route 55, Wingdale, New York.
Thank you. All right. If you could just give the secretary, that'd be fantastic. Amen, street address, please.
Yes. Stancy Duhamel, 212 Dual Hollow Road in Wingdale. My topic tonight is a decommissioning plan. Planning board has asked for one or asked about one, and I'd like to know where it is. And I do expect a decommissioning plan unlike what Attorney Polladoro is proposing and what Transco seems to be interested in, and there's a good reason for that. Yes, we do want to see the steps taken to remove this project. There are templates online. I've looked at Attorney Polladoro's website. She does not, at least from the website, have experience in negotiating decommissioning plans, energy projects, performance bonds. If Transco, as they say, if Con Ed will continuously upgrade their project for, if you listen to them, almost eternity, then Con Ed and Transco's other partners, Evant Grid, National Grid, and Fortis, which owns Central Hudson, in a complicated arrangement, they can guarantee the decommissioning plan. I don't believe that our town should be saddled with the costs of decommissioning this project, suggesting that we do it and then put a lien on the property to recover the costs. Puts a burden on us, some of us, if it's 40 to 80 years, or then the next time they told us 40 to 100 years. That is something that we should be looking at. Which is it? There's an accounting lifespan? Let's see it. Okay. That changes through depreciation. But Con Ed and Transco have this project on their books. So what do they have it on their books at? And if it costs 80 million now, what's it going to cost us to pull it down 20 years from now? I mean, we don't know about how technology changes, and I want to thank you, Chairman Corteen, for bringing this up and holding their feet to the fire. In the 1970s, we were still looking at rooms, warehouses full of IBM mainframes. At the same time, Hewlett-Packard came out with the first handheld device. We can now do a lot of what was done on those IBM mainframes. So how do we know today that the Transco infrastructure and equipment is going to be operating 100 years from now when, for all we know, it's going to all be happening on here remotely? Who knows where? Iron Mountain, you know? So anyway, I'd like to know the level of Ms. Polladoro's experience with electrical equipment and infrastructure, decommissioning plans, performance bonds. AKRF has plenty of experience with energy companies. They represent them. If there's not a conflict of interest, Mr. Werner, I'd like you to bring them in. You've brought in your experts in natural resources, in sound, moderate to large-impact projects, which this certainly has. I'd love to see the notes from your conversation with Transco on what you consider to be moderate and large impacts, and I will submit it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
There, you seem to make your way across the room when I asked. Your name and street address?
Mitchell Ibera, 4 Craig Lane, Dover Plains.
I'm sorry. Before you begin, if you could take off your hat, please.
Yeah, of course.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mitchell Ibera, Dover Plains, New York, 4 Craig Lane.
I'm sorry, 4?
4 Craig Lane.
Craig Lane, okay. Thank you.
So I've been a community of this town for about 20 years of my life now. Born and raised here. I attended Dover High School, which is where Cricket Valley first showed up to a couple presentations within the high school gymnasium, and they presented themselves as a green energy corporation, lowering taxes, basically fiddling their way through the kids so that we could go home and tell our parents that a new energy plant was coming in and that they were going to get lower taxes. Of course, that never happened. My parents have higher taxes now when it comes to the energy bill. And I'm a poli sci major, so I've wanted to come back and maybe run for the town in the future. And considering your planning board's state mission is to preserve the natural environment of this town, I don't see how that's conducive to letting these people come in and, after learning from Cricket Valley, why we would allow another energy plant to come in and do the same, as stated before, and a lot of people with, you know, a lot more experience in this matter than I have, that once you let them in, more come in. And that's what we're seeing right now. And loving the town as it is and the natural beauty of it, I'd like to preserve it, maybe for my children if I ever decide to have them in the near future, and show them where I grew up, and I don't want them to see the town that I grew up in become a radiologic dump. So yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come to the podium. Doctor.
I am extremely impressed with the presentations today by the townspeople. Something you really take pride in. I'm a little embarrassed to come back with a mundane kind of, but it does fit with some of the other comments. Last time I was here, I was complaining about the DEC and not getting... Last time I was here, I was complaining about the DEC and not getting good data on the water quality and the output from the dumps. And I looked at the paperwork last Friday and see that there has been studies done now on the water chemistry, and looks like quite sophisticated, and so on. Problem that I have with it is there's no data, no real detail on what was done, how many samples is, was mentioned before, and we really need to be able to see this stuff. It can't be just looked at and rubber stamped by other people that are connected with the same project. So I would like to ask for the data and the procedures, techniques, and so on, used, sampling methods used for the data that they have summarized, presented for the water quality. That really is very important. The bedrock and hydrology, again, it looks like this was a new study that they have done, and and it looks like it's fairly good, but it's a statistical thing, and you don't know, you can't really predict what's going to happen to those marble blocks, and how far the fractures are going to go, and so on. How much is going to change our hydrology? So I would like to ask that the applicant place three monitoring wells on our property, at our locations, the wet ones, that are automatically monitored and keep track of the groundwater levels, so we know whether or not they really are changing.
I want to clarify, I'm just going to pause for a second. So you said their property or our property, meaning?
No, Froggs's property.
This, the property south of their property?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, that's all.
Because that's, that's what I'm worried that they're going to have an impact on.
During construction?
Well, it should be in by construction time, the wells. But I fear that it will happen gradually over the next 10 years. and we put wells in, or we, I'm sorry, we put weirs in following Cricket Valley Energy. They've never been implemented, they never sampled, I don't think. But I would like to have these actually happen. So, thank you very much, appreciate the time.
Seeing no one else approaching the podium. If there's anyone else who'd like to speak, please come to the podium at this time. Say your name.
My name is Bob Deutsch, I live at 15 White Farm Road. Gentlemen, before me mention the groundwater, I'm concerned about the air. I live kind of northwest of where Cricket Hill is, and in the winter and at night, you can see vapors coming out, and they blow in our direction. What else are we going to be putting in the air?
Let me see.
Holly Morrissey from Cricket Hill Road. I have a couple of questions, and someone mentioned about Transco having to validate their information. You said that we were notified that this is being proposed. I received nothing until Charlie made me aware that the project was going to go forward. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice here. A blessing to many. I'm curious, you say that Transco on Route 1 in Connecticut has buried lines for whatever reason, and that, that may be more of a problem, that there was an issue with the cables. Have you had any instance on Route 1 with the underground cables?
Ms. Morrissey? Ms. Morrissey, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ryan. I'm wondering if there's been an incident of underground cables having to be repaired versus the overhead.
Right.
I'm concerned about whether they're blasting to create a support for these 145-foot towers, or they're blasting to do underground cables. How that's going to affect, again, I'm no, you know, biologist, but how that's going to affect what Cricket Valley Energy is sitting on, or our wells up on Cricket Hill, if we're going to lose our water, because everything goes downhill, and if that's disturbed, that concerns me. I did check Google. U.S. Transco is owned by a European company worth $41.28 billion as of October 2nd. So I think if the cost is a little bit more to bury the lines, so be it. And I also wonder why, my understanding is the power is going to ConEd customers and possibly Connecticut, not NISIC. So why Dover? We don't want to be an easy mark for this or additional power. We have Cricket Valley, we have solar, now we have Transco, and my understanding is a hydrogen product is also being proposed?
Planning Board has not received anything.
Again, it's like a domino falling. We're already looking at these horrible towers through Cricket Valley. It should not be the welcome to Dover. We need to, we have a beautiful environment here, and we need to maintain that. So, thank you for your time.
So, Ms. Morrissey, just to clarify something about a hydrogen plant. I was part of a meeting earlier this year, someone proposed having some kind of hydrogen plant in town. The planning board hasn't received any kind of application, so there's nothing, okay. Thank you. All right. Not approaching, okay, seeing no one else approaching the podium. Make a motion to continue this public hearing to our meeting on November 21st. Motion made by, member Roman? Seconded by? Member Vilano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Okay, so this public hearing is now continued to November 21st. Thank you all. Member Williams, did you want to request something?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I think, I believe.
I got you.
All right, let's give everybody a minute to clear out of the room. Everybody, everybody. All right, everyone can take the conversation out of the room, we still have business to attend to.
Yeah, I didn't do it. Not really.
What, the gavel?
Yes.
She's got a special machine, it does a lot better.
No, I was going to throw it over to you, but I didn't want to hit your head.
Recording too.
Do I have like two and a half minutes to go to the bathroom? Well, listen, just about the time, basically.
So, now onto old business. We have Harlem Valley Homestead. Anyone like to come to the podium?
Good evening, my name is Kathleen Gallagher with Insight Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture. I'm joined tonight by the applicant, Josh Viertel of Harlem Valley Homestead.
One moment, please, Ms. Gallagher. Neil Alexander, our land use attorney.
It's been about seven months since the last time we were in front of the planning board. The plans from a substantive standpoint have remained the same since that time. There were some minor revisions related to kind of the natural iteration of the project's design for layout grading and utilities. The proposed project, though, continues to have 42 guest units, and operationally will continue to function as previously outlined. What we have been doing in that time, where we've been focusing our energy, is responding and resolving the outstanding comments from the planning board and their consultants, as well as continuing our coordination with outside regional and state agencies. We've been coordinating with the town highway superintendent, town engineer, legal consultants, other officials with the town, to define the scope of offsite improvements for Old Forge Road. It's the applicant's understanding that the town of Dover will widen and grade Old Forge Road for the benefit of existing and future users. The applicant will then underwrite the pavement application for the entirety of Old Forge Road, with a type and specification of material to be confirmed by the town of Dover. We've addressed the fire company memo items and resubmitted our emergency action plan to the town's fire inspector, who enforces the fire code. We've included response memos from both the fire inspector and the town engineer, and believe those issues have been addressed at this point. The latest submission includes a full architectural drawing set, including additional view shed analysis, as the planning board acts as the architectural review board. That submission is the same submission that was submitted to the state historic preservation office earlier this summer, in which we received a letter of no adverse impact. We continue our review with the DEC. Our latest comment memo from their office has minor comments, which we've addressed. We have resubmitted back to them last week, and will continue to CC the planning board for those submissions. We also continue to work with the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, and have included our latest submission in the most recent submission that the planning board has received. And again, we are working on a resubmission, and we'll keep the planning board up to date on that. We've heard from the public in the past that the magnitude of studies that have been conducted on this project is extensive and difficult to understand when they're being submitted in pieces. Therefore, we've done a full collective update of the reports and the studies and the drawings. Many of these updates were minor, however, out of respect for the public's requests in the past, we have made sure to align the reports and the drawings for a fully coordinated submission, and this is in anticipation of, prior to reopening a public hearing. In light of that, we do respectfully request reopening the public hearing at the next planning board meeting on November 21st, and I'm happy to take any questions from the board or the consultants on this most previous submission.
Okay, thank you. So yes, we each did receive a banker's box of documents from you. Do you have some kind of memo or summary that, I mean, I asked Planner Warner to come along, but something that's kind of points to, like, this is new, this is not new, it just, it's a lot.
It is a lot.
And so it just, it's, you know, again, I don't want to re, if it's 90% the same, I'm not looking to reread the 90% that's the same. I start reading through something, and I realize, oh, I've read this already, and then I move on.
Correct. From the site plan perspective, if you want to bring up the master plan, I can point to just a couple very small and minor items that have changed.
Site plans or master plan?
The master plan. And I believe this is pretty well outlined as well in AKRF's memo. If we go to M2 and scroll up to the farm, let's do M3, I apologize.
M2, so M3? This would be M3?
Oh, let's go back one. Wherever, wherever you were, this one, exactly. Beautiful. I don't have the laser pointer that is normally here.
Right here. We want that back.
The Homestead House, which is located to the south of the farm core, used to be a building that had basically an opening right in the middle of it. It was two buildings that were connected by an overhead roof, that has now been condensed into one L-shaped building that is in this location. The farm hub now has a lean-to on the north side of it. Again, that just is about, operationally, we have looked even closer at how the site is going to function, and from a farming operation, it made more sense to have a covered porch in that area.
So when you say lean-to, like, what size are we talking about? Because I imagine a lean-to being small.
It, it's just a small covered, like, it's a small covered.
It's a small rectangle on top of the large rectangle.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Same thing in this area, there's going to be a small overhead structure just for people to pull on again, so then, when they are, I believe, bringing like sheets and towels and things like that into it, they have a covered area to load and unload areas. And we have added a hill shed, which again, we have looked more closely operationally as what the site's going to need for storage and things of that nature, and it was addressed that there was one other structure that needed to be here in order to house some of the equipment that's going to be needed for the hospitality on site. Those are the major items that have changed in the farm core. If we scroll up a little bit to the spa area, which is located right here, again, that layout just changed a little bit from one submission to the next submission. The sauna is now pulled a little closer to that area, but again, operationally, it's all generally remaining the same. So as we continue to detail out the plans and get further into design, it's really just a natural iteration of storage and things of that nature as we get into more details. But operationally, the number of units, how the site is going to function, has not changed. Some of the square footages have changed for some of the buildings, all of those were updated and reflected on the master plans. We've also given an updated request for the buildings that we are asking for a waiver for, for their square footages, and again, those are all pretty well detailed out in AKRF's memo.
All right. Since we last discussed this, like you said, about seven months ago, has there been any acquisition of property that will be part of this project?
No.
So there, there hasn't been any acquisition of property that has been, that will be part of this project, is what you said?
Correct. Honors Nest and Nono's Garden still remain these five parcels, which is what is being presented to the planning board as part of this application.
Let me go to the the highway department memo from our highway superintendent. I'm not going to read the entire thing, but just, you brought it up in your initial presentation. So, "From Jason Satori, Highway Superintendent, an agreement has been reached between Town of Dover Highway and Harlem Valley Homestead on the improvement of Old Forge Road. Town of Dover Highway Department will be in charge of the overall project of the improvements. This paving project will start where the New York State DOT apron ends and continue down to the end of the road where the Adam Hayde and David Alaman property is located a total of 6,300 feet roughly." Then some coordinates. "Town of Dover Highway Department will take care of changing out metal pipes to plastic pipes through the road where needed. Town of Dover Highway Department and Harlem Valley Homestead will work together on drainage along the sides of the road. Town of Dover Highway Department will do the final grading, adding any Item 4 material throughout the road where needed before final paving. Harlem Valley Homestead will be required to obtain easements from property owners along Old Forge Road, where the road needs to be widened to 18 feet." And they says C-exhibite. "The town will require a four-foot easement along the edge of the road. Harlem Valley Homestead will be responsible for paying for paving Old Forge Road to 18 feet wide with three inches of asphalt binder coat, followed up by oil and stone within a year's time." And then again, more coordinates. "This paving project will be done in the final phases of Harlem Valley Homestead's overall project to ensure the new paved road won't get destroyed by heavy equipment and use during their main construction project. The final certificate of occupancy for the entire project will not be issued until the road is paved." And then sincerely, Jason Satori, Highway Superintendent. So that is, you agree with his memo?
Yes, the applicant and his agreement.
All right. And so, I mean, this memo only came out just recently, so have you started the process of acquiring easements, or is it just not?
I can give a small update on that.
Sure.
We've been working with applicant's real estate attorney on coming up with a form of easement that the town would
And then sincerely, Jason Satori, highway superintendent. So that is, you agree with his memo?
Yes, the applicant and his agreement.
All right. And so, I mean, this memo only came out just recently, so have you started the process of acquiring easements? Or is it just not?
I can give a small update on that.
Sure.
We've been working with applicant's real estate attorney on coming up with a form of easement that the town would find acceptable. We had a first draft, and we provided comments, and I saw, we got another update earlier today, but we've not had a chance to review it yet.
Okay. So that's in process?
Yeah.
And so, just to be clear, you do understand that the highway department and Harlem Valley Homestead coming to an agreement on the road really has no effect on the planning board and our decision-making process when it comes to the project?
Sure.
Okay, just want to make sure there's, you know, no this for that.
Understood, yes.
Right, thank you. All right. That's all I have at this time. Member Williams?
Still reading the box list.
Yes. All right. I guess we'll start off with Attorney Palladoro. Any legal concerns we need to-
No, I mean, the biggest update has to do with the road, understanding what's going to be required of the applicant, and seeing if they can get the easements. So, we're going to continue to work forward on the form of easement and see how that goes. If the board is ready, you could consider rescheduling the public hearing for November, so the public can comment on this new submission.
Okay. Again, I think the public having the, you know, the knowledge of, again, what's new, so as to not have to try and read everything all over again would be very helpful.
The focus for the summary is the Part 3. We did update the Part 1, Part 2, Part 3. The Part 3 is the summary of the scope of the project and looking at the mitigation impacts at this snapshot in time. And that's going to be the most succinct manner in order to, to review the project as it currently stands. We've also updated the architectural package, which includes view sheds as well, which I know was interest to the public, and I would direct them to that as well.
Okay.
And given, I was going to say, given the two public hearings we already have scheduled for the 21st, you may consider doing the meeting after that, December 5th.
That's a possible consideration. Again, just to, I guess, to put a final on the, I just, you know, I want to make sure that no one is, you know, that there's nothing, I'm not trying to make it sound malicious. There's nothing like hidden in Exhibit 19 or whatever that just, you know, you wouldn't get to it unless you were told, hey, this is new. So I guess I'm just looking for the public having the, you know, here's a list of everything that's new, so.
And I mean, you know, I- I think, as they said, the Part 3 report, which I still am reviewing-
Sure.
And will provide comment on, has a summary of everything that they've done to date. I did look at all the reports again that were submitted, and, you know, they added information about the road project that has been agreed to with the town. Like, that's a big addition to the traffic study, otherwise it remains as it did the last time it was before us. Same with the noise study, which was another item that was of importance. They've made a lot of progress with the outside agencies. As I summarized in the memo, they have SHPO sign off on the latest architecture, the visuals. DEC has been, they've been back and forth with DEC a lot on presuming the presence of timber rattlesnake, bog turtle, Indiana bat, northern long-eared bat, as being impacted by the project. So they're doing measures as part of the plan set. There are notes on the plans, there are design notes, there are design considerations for the project that are going to serve to mitigate impacts of potential presence of those species, which they've documented they were not able to find when they investigated, but they're presuming they're there. So that's almost, they are very close to having a DEC, you know, blessing of what they're proposing. And the DOT has also been provided with the latest plans for their highway work permit at 55 in Old Forge Road, which we've seen before. It's really not any different than the last time it was before us. So, yeah, I agree that Part 3 is the best summary, and that's public now, people can review that. I still have to provide comment, and we will discuss that. But my memo also shows the side-by-side of the plans. I think I got it right, it sounds like, when she went through what changed. Looks like I was pretty much on the mark there. So, yeah, I think it's, you know, it's probably ready for another public hearing opening.
And again, just to be clear, when you say Part 3, you mean this-
Yeah, the narrative, secret narrative, right? Really, the Part 3 is, again, for the board to adopt. But they wrote a, basically, an expanded EAF report, which is not uncommon when you have a project this size.
Anything further, Planner Warner?
No.
And Attorney Palladoro, did you have anything further?
No.
Neil Berger?
I'm still reviewing, but didn't see why there was anything significant in this sewer or drainage, just some minor updates on it, so nothing at this time. I'll give a more thorough comment after I've reviewed everything.
And you were in consultation with the highway superintendent?
Absolutely, for the highway and the emergency action plan. Jason and I have been working with the, and building inspector. So both Don Anderson, Jason and I have been working very close on both those projects that you presented.
And in talking with the highway superintendent myself, he said, you know, there's the issue of the bridge that needs to be worked out, and then some-
That's part of that same agreement, yes. It's all part of the same agreement.
All right. Anything further, Neil Berger?
No.
Thank you. All right, having heard from our consultants, does any, the planning board have any further comments or questions at this time? All right. I think what we need to do is have a discussion now amongst ourselves as to, are we having this public hearing on November 21st, or is this starting on December 5th? I would think, really, that there are two other public hearings to be, in my opinion, a secondary consideration to, there was just the material that was submitted. And, you know, again, in hearing from our planning consultants, you know, if you look through the Part 3, 35 pages, it doesn't sound as though it would be so insurmountable. But, again, I want to hear from what each of you think, and then we'll decide.
I'm more inclined for the December 5th.
December 5th?
Opportunity to kind of go.
December 5th?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So what I'm hearing from the planning board is, like, we could, you know, vote now on having the planning, on having the public hearing be December 5th. Ms. Gallagher?
Are you guys okay with it?
Anyway, you're all going to speak.
We'll defer to you, I guess I would say, you know, we began this process over five years ago at this point, and the sooner we can move it forward, the better. But we also understand that you will operate essentially as volunteers, and it can be a very late night with multiple public hearings. And we will defer to you, but if we keep it moving, we appreciate it.
Right, I guess, what, one argument that could be made is that we wouldn't want to give you any short shrift because your public hearing might not start till this time on, you know, November 21st. And members of the public might think, that's too late for me to come out to hear from Harlem Valley Homestead. Planning Board members might just naturally phone out. Okay.
Yeah, we'll defer to you, and if we can keep the process moving in a timely way, we do appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Okay. All right, so hearing what I'm hearing, I'll make a motion that the, we'll set a Harlem Valley Homestead public hearing for December 5th at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the planning board could hear from the public. Seconded by-
Second.
Member Villano.
December 5th.
Discussion. So you can know discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say no. And that motion passes 5-0 with two absences. Anything further to discuss this evening?
We were just confirming as to whether you thought there was any need for us to come back or your staff.
I mean, we, I would, we're not going to be putting you on the agenda for the 21st. You're welcome to see what else happens.
I meant more from the standpoint of-
There might be a deli.
Yes.
All right.
So kind.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything further?
No, we really, I know it's been a long night for all of you, so we really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, so our next meeting is November 21st. That looks, that would be about five, that would be five weeks from now. Again, the reason for that, this happens every year, is we can't have our meeting on Monday, November 7th, because it's the day before Election Day, and the room needs to be set up for Election Day, which, you know, they are all getting in here at 5:30 or whatever in the morning.
No, 5 o'clock.
5:00 in the morning, okay.
Yes.
So, yeah, so they're not looking, they're looking at everything set up before. So, so anyway, that's why there's no meeting three weeks from now. So this meeting is November 21st, five weeks from now. And then, meeting December 5th, two weeks after that, and meeting December 19th, two weeks after that. All right? Okay, so, just one last thing before we adjourn. Tonight is the last planning board meeting for our media clerk, Logan, who has been fantastic in getting these meetings out to the public and troubleshooting, and very responsive when I call him on the phone to start the meeting and then the meeting. So, Logan, thank you very much. You can see us back there, so thank you, we appreciate it. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Member Holmes. All those in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.